Good evening and welcome to the Township of Woolwich, regular meeting of council on May 13th, 2025. Welcome to everyone here today and it's a full house, so thank you for coming. And to all those watching on YouTube, I will start with the roll call of council. I'm Mayor Shontz and present and chairing this meeting, councillor Bryant, councillor Burgess,
President.
Councillor Kado.
President.
Councillor Schwint.
President.
And councillor Grant sends her regrets. Before we get going on the agenda items, council needs to reconvene in open session. So can we have a motion councillor Schwint, councillor Kado, all those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. May is Mental Health Awareness Month and you may notice the green decorations on the desk. Are they there? They're not there. Well, we do have green decorations that will be there at some point provided by Woolwich Counseling Centre. The same raise on vacation, we fall apart. What can I say? The centre's campaign is raising awareness and funds to support local mental health initiatives. You can learn more about this initiative and the services they offer at woolwichcounselling.org. And since 1985, the week containing May 12th is known as National Nursing Week, which celebrates the approbations of nursing to the wellbeing of Canadians. On behalf of council and the township, we thank all those who are on the front lines of physical and mental wellness for their tireless efforts. And I would also like to take a moment to remember regional councillor Carrie Williams. She passed away a couple of weeks ago. She lost her battle with cancer. She's two young children and she was always a real role model for living life and living life to the fullest and we'll miss her. So let's take a moment of silence, please. Thank you. I also acknowledge that the land on which we live has been here from time immemorial and Indigenous people have lived here from time immemorial. And so I thank the Chinatown, also called the Atawandaron, the Anishnaabig and the Hodunashonee people who have lived here, cared for this land and continue to share and steward this land with us. May we together learn to care for each other, our flora and fauna and the land that sustains us. Do council members have any declarations of pecuniary interest councillor Schwint?
Item 6.11, I believe, Cedar Spring.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. We have no items to come forward from closed session. But the first portion of this meeting is a public meeting. And it is for information only, so no decisions will be made tonight. Any questions can be directed to development services staff following the meeting. And I declare the planning public meeting to be open. And I will start by calling on manager of planning Victor Le Brusch to present the information report. Over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Shontz. Members of committee and council, staff and public. My name is Victor Le Brusch, manager of planning, and it's my pleasure to give a brief overview and a PowerPoint presentation for this application. The application details are noted on the first slide. The application submitted by Polacorp Inc. for purpose of an official plan zoning by law amendment, draft plan of condominium. Those three forms of application. Next, please. The location of the lands are south of Hawksville Road and Conestoga River to the south end limit of the property. And the lands are shown there, about a third of the land to close to half. The bottom portion is, has environmental constraint zoning on those lands. Next slide, please. The proposed amendments include the entire property in itself to include it within the settlement boundary. A portion of it is within the settlement boundary, a portion is out. So the amendment will include all of it within the settlement boundary for St. Jacobs. Changing the designation to ancillary, sorry, residential and ancillary use from its agricultural designation, as well as from natural hazard to environmental protection. As the mapping for the application illustrates, the zone change is from agricultural to residential R7 with site-specific provisions that are contained within our information reports that was provided in the agenda tonight, as well as some open space zoning again to the bottom portion, about a third of the property. It would also include a draft plan of condominium application. There will be, it's important to note in the required future site plan applications based on the proposed form of ownership here through a plan of condominium and blocks of multi-residential forms of development. Proposed in this case will require future site plan applications which will, I guess, get into more details of landscape plans, lighting, grading, drainage, et cetera, which are more specific to each block compared to the overall functional servicing report and other supporting studies with this submission. The proposal is for single detached dwellings in the form of a condominium, lotless block form and townhouse, as well as stacked townhouse development. There's also amenity areas, stormwater management, pond, pumping station, and of course, the road system throughout, which would be a private road system, as well as the pumping station being private, given that it's a plan of condominium in this case. Next slide, please. Township's official plan, the application requests again the subject property brought in, be brought into the settlement boundary. It is noted that the regional official plan does identify these lands to be within the boundary as a result of the last amendments to the regional official plan, known as ROPA 6 and supported by the province. The application requests a designation to be updated to reflect the proposal and the supporting studies that were submitted with this application. And the following designations again would be applied, residential ancillary, natural hazard and environmental protection. Next slide, please. The current land is shown here sort of illustrates where on the left-hand side, the subject lands currently agricultural and environmentally constrained to the south. On the right portion of the screen shows the lands in red, which are subject to the zone change and official plan land use designations for residential development. Again, about the bottom third is to be zoned, open space, natural constraint hazard lands. Next slide. Concept plan includes in the form of a few different types of housing. Single detached dwellings, again, within a lotless blocks, a form of condominium. Traditional townhouse units of about 55 units. Double stacked townhouse, those would be like two-story, a total of 30, 34 units. And then what's called triple stacked townhouse blocks at 45 units. There are three amenity areas totaling just over 3,000 square meters. One noted passive amenity area to the south, a private stormwater management facility and a private pumping station, as well as the retaining of a gas regulatory station along Hawksville Road. Of course, there's private road system and an emergency access is proposed to Hawksville Road. Next slide. This sort of just outlines the various forms of housing that I just mentioned. Again, single detached in green, townhouse, essentially more traditional two-story townhouses shown in the yellow pattern. Blue is the double, what it's called double stacked townhouses, those are two-story. And then triple stacked, which are three-story stacked townhouses in purple outline. Next. There's three amenity areas as shown here in green. Passive amenity area to the south end of the property and a private stormwater management facility that's outlined in purple. Next. So again, the purpose, as Mayor Shontz had mentioned at the onset of this meeting, is to provide information to council, technical information and provide opportunity for public comment on this. No decisions are to be made at this public meeting. The application having been submitted just over two months ago is in circulation. Not all circulation comments have been received to date. And those are being compiled right now as they come in and will be sent back to the applicant along with our sort of planning summary comments in the next couple of months. Staff will continue to work with the application and certainly taking into account what we hear as questions and comments here tonight to at some point in the coming future to report back to council after all topics have been addressed in the form of a recommendation report. Timing on that is undetermined at this time. And also I would note that the plans and density, the form of housing is still also part of our considerations and subject to further review and discussions with the applicants. I was remiss to note at the beginning that the assigned planner on this is Stephen Dykstra of our planning section department. He sends his regrets. He's not feeling well. He had intended certainly to be here to give the presentation, but any comments can be provided directly to him. His email address is there or to myself in planning department. That's all I would have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Are there any questions? Councillor Schwint?
Thanks for the overview. I guess I'm wondering, does the township have experience in large condominium developments like this? I see a very wide range of types of dwellings and how much commonality is there between that single family home at one end versus triple stacked townhouse at the other end, especially with the amount of services that will be taken on by the condo corporation?
If I may to councillor Schwint, who you're mayor. This, I would say, in answer to your question is sort of unique in regards to the mix of uses that are happening within this property. We certainly have several examples of condominiums of, you know, small-scale apartment townhouses. There's a few stacked townhouses, but this on one development is unique to provide sort of that different transition of various forms of development. So it's unique in that regard. I think the single detached dwellings that are proposed here are are adjacent to built, single detached areas. So it provides that transition from that point.
Are those single detached part of the condo as well?
Yes, they would be.
And would it be similar, although considerably larger, to say what St. Jacobs Meadows is? Are you familiar with? I think it would be. It's just on a much larger scale and more variety of housing types, perhaps.
If I may just add, you know, subject to further discussions with the applicants and they may answer those related questions too in terms of this condominium could be, is anticipated to be registered in phases and there may be, you know, more than one condominium block potentially in here, but all part of the overall plan of condominium consideration at the initial stages.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Bryant?
Thank you. Right now, we currently have 162 parking spaces allocated for this development. Is there, do we have the ability to require more parking? I'm just concerned with 151 homes. We know there's going to be more than one car per household. So we're going to have a huge issue with parking everywhere.
We certainly recognize that detail on the plan and it's under review and it will be further discussed with the applicants. will be further discussed with the applicants.
Uh, yeah, Ms. Freeze?
Yeah, and I think we have discussed this previously with council, but we do have regulations for and requirements for parking in our zoning by law, so we're not really able to request beyond what's required in the in the zoning by law. That is the, if they're providing the minimum number, then that would meet our zoning, they wouldn't require any kind of zoning amendment for that.
Councillor Kado?
Thanks, Mayor. Just had a question regarding the plan for the condominium. How is it different than a plan for a subdivision?
Through Mayor Shont to councillor Kado, it's it's basically a private initiated development and, but it does follow similar requirements of a plan of subdivision to require, you know, approved stormwater management areas, grading and drainage, landscape plans. There would be a condominium declaration as part of the approval that would specify how things are managed and paid for, and those are essentially funded through the condominium fees and all subject to municipal, you know, satisfaction and approval.
Ms. Freeze?
Yeah, if I can just add to that, so I think from appearance and from the way that it looks, it will look very similar to any other typical subdivision. The difference is the ownership of those common elements and the applicant, when they, when they go through their application as well, they can explain what will be in common ownership and what will be in private ownership. But it will look very similar to a normal subdivision, it's just the, the underlying legal agreements and for the, for the common elements such as the road that they would be responsible for maintaining themselves rather than the township maintaining the road. So we wouldn't go in and we wouldn't do the snow plowing, we wouldn't do the, the garbage collection on a, on a, on a regular road within a condo development like you would do in a typical subdivision that was on, fronting onto public roads and public infrastructure.
Councillor Bridges?
Through you, Mayor Shont, just following up on that question, I guess, what would happen in that scenario then if the condo corp or whoever kind of went under later on or had issues financially? Would we kind of take that over or who would be responsible for maintaining all that?
The, sorry, yes, to, to answer the question, councillor Burgess, the condominium declaration requires reserve funds that would secure those things and securities provided through the condominium corporation. There's also condominium insurance that would be provided all in, to protect those cases. Certainly, again, all, all prescribed under the planning act to ensure that those things are safeguarded.
Councillor Schwint?
Saying just follow up with that, so lift stations required for this development, that lift station remain the property of the condominium corporation or the township?
Condominium Corporation.
Councillor Kado?
Thanks, Mayor. Through you, councillor Grant actually prepared some questions and since she sends her regrets, she has asked me to ask them on her behalf. So I'm going to start with whether or not the St. Jacobs School can handle this level of growth.
To answer councillor Kado's question on that, certainly the public school board and separate school board have been circulated this application to comment on it. So we'll certainly take the lead from, from their point of view. We have no indications at this point that there is a capacity issue or concern, but we haven't actually received their comments yet from the school board.
And if I may, in a similar manner, we've had reports from residents of sewage backups. Now, we're hearing that there is capacity at the wastewater plant for this additional population. The staging report indicates yes, but we've heard, you know, anecdotal and real world accounts of that not being so much the case, so I was wondering if you could speak to that briefly?
In terms of our discussions with regional staff and certainly our own internal infrastructure services capacity has been confirmed, that ultimately comes from the region and their monitoring on an annual basis, and that's been confirmed with them. We've, we've heard and seen in this, the circulation comments, of course, that there has been flooding concerns and capacity concerns, which I know other staff may be able to speak to the flooding matters and some discussions that have happened with development to the south.
Mr. Puppitt?
Yeah, thank you, through Mayor Shont to councillor Kado. I think, I think they're unrelated, would suggest that. I know we've had flooding in St. Jacobs in the low lying areas of twenty seventeen, twenty twenty one and twenty twenty five that we're aware of. We just met recently with the St. Jacobs metal board, had a discussion with them, but there is work that's happening, but that was a, a weather event that you couldn't really prepare for, unfortunately. The region and the good news side of things is going through an environmental assessment process and reviewing the wastewater treatment plan and for upgrades for future, but again, unrelated, there is capacity available. I will leave the existing system capacity piece to development services as part of the review when you do get applications such as this, that's part of the review process and that's incumbent on the proponent, obviously, to demonstrate some of those capacity challenges if there's upgrades or anything like that required to existing systems. But as far as we are concerned, from an infrastructure services perspective and the recent flooding, completely unrelated.
And as far as I know, regionally, there's capacity, so that's all part of the analysis. Sorry, was there another one from Kayla?
Yeah, but I think it could probably wait for the presentations.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other questions of staff, we'll move on to participants and we have a number of registered participants this evening. So we will start with David Galbraith. Welcome.
Professional planner and the president of Up Consulting, based out of the city of Kitchener. I'm here tonight with Mike Pupolo Polacorp, who's the applicant for this proposed development. And I do have a presentation available this evening too, if I'm able to bring that up. Can I use this to toggle slides as well? Okay, great. Coming? There we go. So as you've heard from Victor in the previous presentation, purposes of tonight's meeting is to introduce the application to council, members of the public, and then also, and equally so, to receive feedback from council, members of the public and other, other bodies with respect to the application. So we're here to listen as well as to provide an overview of the presentation, recognizing that a lot of what I'm going to say is duplicative of Mr. LaBrash's presentation. So in terms of an outline tonight, my, Mike here will provide an overview of Polacorp and showcase some of the projects they've done in Waterloo region and elsewhere. And then I will go through details of the application, site context, existing policy context, required planning applications, and then some preliminary planning application. Recognizing that Victor did just go through a lot of this, I'll try to keep it brief just to provide more opportunity to the members of the public tonight. So I will hand this over to Mike now.
Thank you, David. Good evening, council and much of St. Jacobs. My name is Mike Pupolo, I'm the co-CEO of Polacorp Bank. We've been active participant in developing housing in the region for over forty five years, so I should probably update that slide, either through combination, my father, mother, myself, or my brother. Our goal has always been to create beautiful lasting communities. We are residing in many of our developments, and in fact, I reside in one of developments in Vista Hills. But it's always nice to go back to see our old developments thriving. When planning a new community, our first question is who will want to live here? In this case, we anticipate a diverse group of future residents, downsizers, young families and local workers among them. I invite council and the general community to go to your recent developments and get a flavoring of what we do, or view our website, polacorpbank.com. Some of our recent developments which are relevant to this, to this development, that we will draw inspiration from South Point Development, which is, I believe, on the top right, that's a back to back stack product. It's located the eastern of the gult, as a mixture of singles, towns and low rise multiple units. Approximately half of the three hundred and fifty units have been constructed and occupied. Vista Hills, which is the bottom left, that's in Waterloo, it was completed in twenty twenty three. It's a mixture of small to medium sized singles, it's a hundred and eighty two unit subdivision in a greater and a broader eighteen hundred unit subdivision. And then finally, Viva Towns is an infill project in Kitcher with a mixture of back to back stacks and, and, and townhouses. We look to be completing this hundred and sixteen development this year. We additionally have other retail properties, mid and high rise sites that we have completed or will complete comprising of four thousand plus units. Shown here is Bear on Queen, which is in the bottom right, and our Mill and Ottawa project, which is going to be along an LRT station in approximately two thousand units. Our approach includes a thoughtful programming of green spaces, building design tailored to the community's character, a selection of appropriate builders, and the integration of meaningful condominium amenities, as we have done in our South Point Development, Vista Hills and Viva Towns. With that, I'll hand over to David to walk through, walk through our concept and share some of the planning and engineering considerations that have guided our work.
All right, and it appears there's an unwanted member of the public in here too, there's a wasp flying around, so just be mindful of that.
I saw that, I think he's up on the light, so hopefully he stays there.
All right, good. All right, so the subject property is fifty one to fifty five Hawksville Road in St. Jacobs, and you can see the general location of the property on this slide here. The site is currently used for agricultural purposes and there's a number of agricultural buildings on site, all of which would need to be demolished in order to facilitate the redevelopment. To the immediate east of the site or right on the screen, we have a residential subdivision and then further to the, to the east and the southeast is the, the core area of St. Jacobs. On the site or abutting the site is the Conestoga River, which you can see going through at the bottom of the screen there, as well as slopes associated with the river itself and wetlands, as well as a woodlot, which you can see kind of in the middle of the property there. This slide summarizes the other, you know, other uses in proximity to the site, which again, you can see the, the general location of the property, south of Calvary United Church to the northeast of the site, and then the traditional core area of St. Jacobs to the southeast. So again, Victor did provide a good overview of the existing policy control, so I'll be brief here, but what I did want to point out is that while the site is not currently within the settlement area in the local official plan or in the zoning by law, it was brought into St. Jacobs urban area through the most recent regional official plan update, which was ROPA six, which is approved in twenty twenty three. So the region has brought the lands into the settlement area and they have been applied to general designation at the regional level of designated greenfield area. Within the township official plan, the site is designated prime agricultural currently. And, and similarly, in the zoning by law, zone for agricultural purposes, as the agricultural designation and zoning would not allow for residential use of the site, the purpose of the applications is really just to allow for that residential use, which is contemplated by the regional official plan. So this slide here shows the proposed development concept that has, that's before you tonight for information purposes, includes a mix of single detached lots, which are found in the southeast corner of the proper, of the development limit of the site north of the river, stacked townhouses, both double stacked and triple stacked townhouses, as well as conventional street, street townhouses. I will note that the detached lots will have driveways similar to detached properties elsewhere in the community, and it's anticipated that each of these buildings will have two car garages. So functionally speaking, that will be a minimum of, you know, two parking spaces within the garage, two in the driveway as well. And then throughout the development, a number of the proposed blocks also have dedicated parking spaces within buildings, so that would be your conventional townhouses. And then there's large surface parking areas as well for, which are proposed for the stacked townhouses, as well as for visitor parking into the site. So taken as a whole, when you consider all of the parking that's provided, functionally speaking, it's actually closer to two point two parking spaces per unit. I will note that the development abuts the CN rail corridor to the west, and as part of the CN requirements set out in their CN proximity guidelines, a fifteen meter setback to residential uses or sensitive uses is required, and that's been provided for on the concept plan, and you can kind of see that the concept has taken advantage of this, this area for the use of surface parking, which will benefit the development and ensure that overflow parking for visitors is not directed to Hawksville Street. In addition to what I've described previously, there are three larger amenity spaces proposed on site, one kind of within the single detached portion of the lot, one towards the, the south, next to a stacked townhouse block, and then one within the wedge between the two stacked townhouse blocks towards the west side of the site. The, these amenity spaces would be subject to a future landscape plan through the site plan approvals process, where the programming of each of these spaces would be agreed upon with city planning staff and landscape staff. So the next couple of slides, I won't go in too much detail because Victor again has provided a very thorough overview of the applications, but essentially the official plan amendment, the purpose of the official plan amendment is to bring the lands into the settlement area, and again, that is very much a conformity exercise to bring the site into alignment with the, the work the region's already done. In addition to that, part of the application is to apply residential and ancillary land use designation to the lands, which would allow for residential use. Sorry. The next application would be the zoning by law amendment, and it, it has been advanced and really tailored to ensure that there are some safeguards in place to, to demonstrate what's being advanced will be carried through into zoning in the future. So the, the lands are currently zoned agricultural, the proposal is to rezone the lands to R seven, which would allow for the mix of uses that is currently contemplated, as well as to ensure the environmental protection at the back of the site, and O two zone is to be applied to areas of the site that are affected by the woodlot and abutting the river where there are sensitive interfaces. A couple of site specific regulations are also proposed, one being to ensure that appropriate development standards are applied to the single detached lots. So any of the single detached lots, even though they are part of the broader development, would be subject to R five regulations, which set out more extensive regulations that are really tailored to single detached uses. And then there are a couple of other site specific regulations that are proposed that deal with setbacks from the building to the common drive aisle, as well as setbacks between a couple of the units on the site. I will note that the R five zone regulations would be applied to the single detached lots, which are in the southeast corner of the development proposal, and one benefit of this approach through the zone change application is to ensure that that area is carried out for single detached purposes in the future. The concept has been designed in order to transition in density from the west to the east, and the idea being that the single detached residences would back on to other single detached residences on the adjacent cul-de-sac. Part and parcel with these application is a draft plan of condominium application, which is being advanced to allow for the individual sale of these units, as well as to establish the common blocks that were described previously. So this would be the amenity areas, the, the common drive aisles, the private pumping station, as well as the stormwater management facility. So as part of the application that was submitted to the township a couple of months ago, a number of technical studies have been advanced and submitted to the city, which are listed on the screen, I won't go through all the details here, but these are currently under review and we look forward to receiving feedback on these reports from city, regional and GRCA departments. So in conclusion, I'll offer some planning thoughts with respect to the application. So firstly, as I'd mentioned before, the request for the official plan amendment is in conformity with the regional official plan, which has already brought the lands into the settlement area. In terms of location of development, the CN rail tracks does really represent a logical western limit for St. Jacobs, and this would be a continuation of development along Hawksville Road. The applications also seek to ensure protection of sensitive environmental features by applying open space designations and hazard designations to these affected lands. And then finally, it's our opinion that the, both the transition in density from the west to the east is appropriate, but beyond that, the mix of housing type will provide various options to potential new residents of St. Jacobs. various options to potential new residents of St. Jacobs. So with that, we'll say thank you, and we're available for any comments, and look forward to hearing comments of the community as well.
Okay, thank you. Before we go on to comments from the community, council, any questions? Councilor Kado?
Thanks, Mayor, through you. The CN rail that you mentioned, there's a 15-meter setback, you're using that for parking. Are there any other concerns or considerations that we would have to take for CN rail? I'm thinking like increasing the density, would they have any authority or concerns about that?
Through the mayor? So, the development has been designed in accordance with the CN proximity guidelines, and this is a document that was co-produced by the Federation of Canadian Municipalities as well as CN. So this portion of the rail line here is classified as a spur line, and they have standard separation distances, so those are being adhered to here. But certainly, CN will be circulated this application. If they have any technical concerns, they will make them known, and we will address them through the development review process.
Let's say the thing up. We had a development in St. Jacobs a few years ago, and we contacted CN Rail, and they had a 7.5-meter setback, and the region had a 15-meter setback, so we'd hear the most egregious, largest setback.
I would assume, too, that you would have something on the purchase agreement reminding people that they're adjacent to a rail line?
Yeah, absolutely. So, as part of the applications, a noise study, vibration study have been completed, and it's pretty typical for CN to require a standard development agreement that would be initially entered into with the developer, but then it would be registered on title to make potential owners, renters, aware that the rail line is there and it's operational, and it's just like, you know, what you'd see in Brazil with the airport.
Yep. A couple more, well, two more, both related to kind of the private infrastructure, first being the stormwater management infrastructure. That's going to be completely maintained by the condo corp, is that correct? I'm thinking cleaning out, for instance, we have a report coming before us about cleaning out a stormwater drain, a little bit more than I would have wanted to spend on cleaning out a stormwater drain, so I'm just making sure that this won't be kind of transferred back to the township to have to maintain in 20 years from now.
Yes, the stormwater management facility would be the responsibility of the condominium corporation.
Great, and then the last question is the passive amenities. These are also private, so they'll only be open to residents of this local community. Is that a fair assessment?
Through the mayor, legally, yes, but as you'd see in a lot of condominium communities, and I've done quite a few of these elsewhere, I've done a couple similarly scaled projects down in Simcoe, Ontario, you know, the residents will have their guests, you know, unless there's a nuisance issue, I think people will be able to use these amenities as well. But technically speaking, yes, it is a common amenity for the condominium.
Councilor Schwenk.
Thanks. After a minute, I'm struggling a little bit understanding the condominium proposal versus a regular planned subdivision. I wonder if you could explain the process you went through to come up with this version versus going through a regular subdivision proposal?
Yeah, certainly. So, I guess the key difference between a typical condominium process and a draft plan of subdivision process is, in a subdivision, you would see amenities like parks, roads, utilities conveyed back to the municipality. Here, it was decided by ownership to allow for, or to advance the condo process, which would see, you know, the owners of the community taking ownership of all of these different amenities. So, it, but beyond that, the differences between a subdivision and a condo plan, they are quite similar, right? So, in a subdivision plan, you're creating blocks for public, for ownership. In a condominium scenario, you're creating blocks that can also be sold, but it's just that you are tied to this common element as well, right? So it is a known thing. I actually used to live at a common element condominium in Kitchener, and so matters related to snow clearing for the development are maintained by the condominium, which can be a blessing and a curse, same with what, with garbage collection as well. So there are, you know, there's differences in who maintains things, but functionally speaking, it still is creating blocks for sale.
Okay, thanks. And I guess to follow up, we've, as a council, we're learning a lot about density and what province wants in terms of density in development, and this definitely meets those targets in an urban setting. How do you see this particular parcel fitting in the larger St. Jacobs? I know it's within like 1.2 kilometers, it was very close to downtown, but as growth lies, but functionally, you can't, you can't walk there. It's up and down a pretty big hill that I won't walk in allowance. Are we allowing for other services in the, I want to call it the west side of St. Jacobs now, or are we forcing people, I guess, to drive to those services that they want?
Through the mayor, yeah, certainly, every community's different, every location is different, and you've seen how Waterloo has grown and how Kitchener has grown, and the rate of change and densification is quite different in those more urban settings than what's being proposed here. So, as a planner, I would, while this does represent a change, there's still low-density forms of housing, and it's very much aligned with the goals that the region and the province have set out, you know, more walkable communities, more dense communities, but still being context-appropriate, and we feel that that meets the objective here.
Anyone else? You'll get your chance. Thank you. We'll hear from the community and see what comes up, unless we've got anything to add yet.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so our next registered participant is Doug Beingestner, chairperson of St. Jacobs' Residential Community. Welcome, Doug. Can you press the button on there?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Schantz, councillors and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. My name is Doug Beingestner, and I'm the chairperson for St. Jacobs Metals, Inc. Anyway, St. Jacobs Metals Residential Community is located at 29 Water Street in St. Jacobs. We are a bungalow townhouse complex with 38 units, built in blocks of four to six units each. We are a nonprofit seniors community, which is self-managed. Following is a brief summary of unfortunate and ongoing events that continue to greatly impact our complex. In October of 2017, we at St. Jacobs Metals wrote council and copied the region of Waterloo, as well as GRCA, regarding raw sewage backing up into six of our units basement through the basement drains during a significant weather event. At the time, we respectfully requested that this be investigated and that steps be taken to ensure that it does not happen again. We did not receive any response from anyone at the time. On September 22, 2021, four years later, after a few days of heavy rain, we again had raw sewage backing up into the same six units, as well as others. Basement rugs, furnishings, and other belongings were lost at great expense to the residents. Again, we appealed to the township to address this issue. We did not seek compensation, only that a meeting be arranged with our representatives, our councillor at the time, and the director of Infrastructure Services. We wanted to be assured that steps could be taken to prevent this from happening again. In fairness, someone did visit our site to inform us that there was nothing wrong with the sewage treatment plant. Okay, so there was no meeting as requested, and again, no action taken. On April 3, a little over a month ago, 2025, once again, we had raw sewage backing up into eight of our units. The panic of this situation was reported at 3:00 a.m. and did not subside until about 12 hours later. Calls were immediately made to the township of Ollich and the region of Waterloo. Nothing could be done at the time, and a significant damage was done to eight units. Later, the Ontario Clean Water Agency was contacted. Information forthcoming revealed that the treatment plant was overwhelmed, and the outflows could not handle the inflows. The plant was over capacity. Having left messages with the region of Waterloo and the township, township of Ollich, contact was made with Eric Schwint, our councillor. A few days later, again, contact was made with Jared Poupé, the director of Infrastructure Services. We requested a meeting to understand the cause of the problem and to seek a resolution to prevent any further occurrences. On May 8, we were contacted by Jared Poupé and arranged for the meeting quite speedily the next day. Thank you for that, Jared. Along with Carter McGuire, the operations manager, and Eric Schwint, we conducted a tour of the complex. The ensuing meeting gave us an overview of the system and of the issues confronted. There are no concrete actions offered to solve the situation. Meanwhile, our community, somewhat fragile seniors, is living under a cloud of health and safety concerns and insecurity. This is not acceptable. It appears obvious that the capacity of the sewer treatment facility is insufficient to handle the ambitious growth that we have seen in St. Jacobs over the past years. Prior to the Bromberg subdivision, none of these issues were evident. The added volume from another subdivision will most certainly produce predictable negative results. Our community is understandably concerned. Until this situation is properly addressed and corrected, we as a community have no alternative but to oppose any further development plans that will impact our present sewage treatment system. Respectfully, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. We'll get to questions in a moment, but I just want to, is someone taking notes? I'm not sure if we talked about the process for that. I don't know, Deanna, if you want to just say how the information that's shared tonight will be kept.
Absolutely, so all of these meetings are recorded, so we can go back and we can go through anything that's brought up by any of the public today. We are taking some kind of brief notes to keep our minds aware of what's going on as well, but any of the comments that are raised at a public meeting do get considered for, in review of the development application, and would be addressed in a follow-up report that would be a recommendation to council.
Okay, I can also forward this report to you, if you wish.
Thank you.
I think we do have the gentleman's submission. It's in our package.
In your package, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, it is the original, my original submission has been edited a little bit to include the meeting that we had. Originally, it wasn't in the original package, but anyway.
Are there questions from council? No, I'm not seeing any. Okay, thank you for coming, and staff are taking note of your concerns with the capacity.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess on the other issue, Jared, do you need a follow-up on that?
Yeah, through you, Mayor Schantz, to council. So confirm, obviously, we met, councillor Schwint was in attendance, as was said, as well as the operations manager. So, there's a few things that are happening. Doug and his group are aware, we're seeking some information from the region, they are currently going through an environmental assessment process on their treatment facility there, so that's a good news story in that there'd be some planned upgrades happening. Just for clarity and for public perspective, what's being vetted today with both developments, there is capacity currently. I think we may have a difference of opinion regarding what capacity is being overwhelmed. We don't feel that it's necessarily the sewer systems in place. We were impacted as well by the event that occurred in April on Water Street, our sewer system was impacted due to surcharging as a result of outfall at the treatment facility and it being on full bypass. So, the region's aware of that, we're currently looking to get some further information on the configuration of facilities, some improvements that may be looked at by the region, and also just to better understand. But a good news story, and Doug, I think it was worth saying, that there was some investment as well there by some backflow preventers for some individual units that have experienced flooding. So, in our walkthrough, it's, you know, obviously an unfortunate event. I think that what we also fact found on was, it was constructed about 1995, and as far as recent memory goes, I don't think that there was any other flooding until 2017. So we had 2017, 2021, 2025. We feel strongly that weather has changed significantly, and we've seen a lot of impacts. Certainly, 2017, I was here for that event, that was significant, snowpack with significant rainfall and melting events, too. So, you know, there's obviously challenges that every municipality faces in dealing with some of that, but we do think there are some steps that are being taken. Certainly, the corporations looked at some of those, and we're looking at some bigger steps with respect to the treatment facility itself. So, that's what we have, but we do owe that group a connection point, and we're asking for probably a month's time to get back to them with some of that information and go from there, and hopefully, in the meantime, nothing else happens.
Okay, thank you. You have control over the weather, it's on Jared. Next delegate is Susan Weber.
So, I want to read in a circle before I give my presentation, just my response to what you guys said, okay? And I'm hoping there's a question coming out of here, but, okay. So, you said that in 2023, the region brought in these extra lands, and I wondered if that was after the time that the region was trying to amalgamate the townships, and we said no, because then that would, you know, that would not look good. The condominium development, to me, sounds like you're building a separate community when you're not including, like when you say that playgrounds and stuff like that are for the condominium area. It sounds to me like you're building a separate community as opposed to becoming a part of an already vibrant community. And I just wondered if, when you were working out the plans and the development, if you took a tour around St. Jacobs, like if you don't know what St. Jacobs Meadows like, how do you know the feel of our town to be able to develop and contribute back to our community? Now, to the meat of my project. Farmland is being lost in average, excuse me, 319 acres a day in Ontario. Ford and locally, Harrison Redmond, do not seem to have the vision to realize the importance of this valuable resource. Ford, in a recent interview, said how the region of Waterloo had lost out on a number of development opportunities because we did not have ground-ready land available. We don't have to go far, for an example, of this poor land stewardship mentality. Last year, I was asked what I thought about a request to start a small business, building a rabbit hut on a family farm. To me, that was a no-brainer, small businesses, small business initiatives on a family farm by family members in this Ford Nation environment. I hope that we are being proactive in having in place incentives to attract farm-saving measures that will help make it viable for families to stay on the farm and not be bought out by developers. We have a migration happening in Woolwich, families moving out west. If we don't protect it, it will be gone. When I was inquiring about developments being proposed for St. Jacobs a few months ago, it was suggested that there are people who might just want to move to St. Jacobs. I believe that. I love living in St. Jacobs. I love my neighbors, and I know they love me. Where's one of my neighbors? I know they love me. I believe that. And I love how my street looks, and I am not alone in this. In the same vein, I would love to live in a bungalow that sits right on the water with sunset exposure, special coffee every day, but I have a budget, and it does not include wants. A few months ago, I took a survey on Facebook from people who live in St. Jacobs to see what they love about living here. I forwarded a number of their responses to this council, but let me give a brief refresh. It's important for the town to preserve as much cultural connections as possible. This includes rural architectural styles, low buildings, skyline, strict limits to food and retail chains, locally-owned businesses, preserve nature trails. Our sense of belonging, excuse me, is linked to our community values, and there is a desire to not want this to be absorbed and turned into a cookie-cutter-like suburb of Waterloo. Small, friendly, safe, small-town feeling, the ability to take money to your door when the girl guides are selling cookies, and you know you won't be home, and to please, please, keep it a small community. This draft. I see this as a pushback response from our council to Ford's big-city developers frenzy, and please don't correct me if I'm wrong about this, because it makes me feel good thinking the way I do about this. And I recognize that I'm cherry-picking, but in your vision statement, you say compatible, well-designed buildings and developments that balance the existing community identity. How does this proposed development being presented here tonight? How does this proposed development being presented here tonight enhance the surrounding public realm and existing streetscape? Well, it can't, because currently it's farmland. I see this proposal as a wish list, because what is laid out here is in no way, in no way complements our end of town. In no manner does it comply with the vision that people in Saint Jacobs have said how they would like to see their own town developed. In no way, shape, or form does it follow any criteria as to enhance Saint Jacobs. And in fact, as I said, how I feel is that it sounds like you want to create your own new community. How would this influx, and how would this influx of homes affect Saint Jacobs Public School? And you said you don't know. As someone from the community stated, we don't want development that looks like a cookie cutter suburb of Waterloo. This development does not reflect the overwhelming response for the town to remain small, for the town to maintain the fabric of what exists or the visual contrast for small-town life. I think of the effect of the huge increase of vehicles coming out of this proposed development on the corner of Hoxville Road and Northside Drive. Everyone will have to be turning left or right. It's already a very busy intersection that is also used heavily by farming equipment, tractors, horse, and buggies. This development will implode the population of Saint Jacobs. Where is the vision that was shared by the community? Where are the plans to accommodate senior living in those with physical challenges? Where is the blueprint for creating a development that complements the small-community footprint that now exists? What is being proposed is not appropriate for Saint Jacobs, and if we don't protect it, it will be gone.
Are there any questions?
No questions again?
No questions. Sue, you do such a good job that there's no questions. Thank you. Okay, next participants, Deborah Martin and Paul Martin.
Good evening, everyone. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you for sharing your time with us. My name's Paul Martin. It's my wife Deb. I currently live at 56 Hoxville Road. The subject land has been purchased from my family. I live in the house that was built by my grandfather. It has a shared water well with the property across the road. I don't think that was mentioned in the, would you be able to slide to the slide of the original? Slide, doesn't really matter. My main concern stems from the, like I've always known that the land around me is subject to be developed. Apparently, the land behind me, which has been purchased 36 acres for development, has also been sold to a developer. And that's apparently been on the books for decades. The land across the street from me, which is the subject land, is just more recently been planned for development. And I anticipated something like what is at Chris Court. If you count up Northside Drive from the river and out Hoxville Road and look at that piece of land that's been there and developed, it's about the same size as the subject land. And there's 20, 22 lots, probably some 45, 50 people living there, 30 cars. This unit going across the street, you said it would be much like a normal subdivision? For me, it's not. I've spent my life, I bought the house from my father, who bought it from his father. I've spent my life anticipating my senior years when I can enjoy my peace and quiet. I've always bragged about having a location, 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 they say, and real estate is everything. It turns out that's going to be a stroke of bad luck for me and my neighbor, because I'm faced with, instead of a vista of the train bridge and the rolling hills, home hardware in the distance, I'm going to be stacked with windows looking, no more quality of life. The road reconstruction was done in front of our place some five years ago. And the people that were planning and engineering and forecasting what needed to be done overlooked the fact that all the field around us has drainage tiles, drainage tiles that were severed, because in the 70s, when they changed the gravel road into a paved road, they reconfigured the infrastructure and they hooked up all the field tile drainage into a underground line and a catch basin that controlled the water before, incidentally, it flows onto the subject property. You mentioned the weather being something that's not in your control, but we need to look forward and control the inevitable. Right now, the Polycorp says there's no active waterway, no active water system on that property, when in fact, that property is a runoff ravine in its natural state. There's a natural creek flowing all my life through that property. And the road reconstruction has funneled all their catch basin, all the field water, which we had a little hiccup, because they initially severed the field water drainage, which left me with four years. Mr. Vine Kessner's story reminds me of what we lived through, flooding. They stopped the drainage and it was left with my basement as the only place to go. After years of fighting with the region and getting them to finally realize that indeed, they messed us up big time. They came out, they spent a couple of days, they spent several thousands, tens of thousands to fix the problem that left us still traumatized. When I see red and yellow coming with the green patches, thinking maybe another 100 millimeters of rain is coming all at once, I can't sleep because of what we went through. And I'm afraid that from what I've seen, somebody's ignoring the inevitable rain flood runoff. The initial projection mentioned a stormwater pond? Or is that a stormwater plan? Because nowhere on the map is there any pond. They're actually going to take what's there and have said the pond that is there is just a decorative thing. Meanwhile, the bull rushes that are there tell the story that has always been runoff. And in those extreme weather conditions that we know are coming, there's going to be not just the runoff that's there now, but all the runoff that's going to come from all these parking spots and roofs that are going in. They have a pumping station, but I'm assuming that's for sewage, a lift station. I don't see anything to retain or collect the water that's going to run off. Right now, it comes down through the new road reconstruction, is funneled into that creek. That creek makes its way to a pond, which I remember in the 60s, they dug the bull rushes out and turned it into a pond. The creek then used to flow and meander its way down to the creek. And I have photos from the train bridge from the 70s showing this subject land. In 20-plus years, while that land had been opened up for random dumping, unsanctioned random dumping, 20-plus years of endless, hundreds of dump trucks dumping hundreds of loads. I took the walk on Sunday morning and I went down to the far end of what became a rubble pile that's extended and extended and extended hundreds and hundreds of feet towards the river. You can see it from Spruce Grove. There's hundreds of thousands of rubble dumped on this where they're planning to build stacked three-level high condos. I stood at the original base level where the natural creek level was on Sunday morning and was faced with 40-foot-high bank of dirt that's been pushed towards the river. There's been no compaction. I work in an industry that shows me that inspectors need to come out and do compaction tests before you can build footings. If you go now, park at the church, walk through the subject land, go down onto the river flats, which is apparently a place where you're not supposed to tamper with the surroundings, there's been a berm pushed up and some dumping made there so that when those rare occasions of weather happen, the snow all melts at once. And that little system that, without any sanctioning from the township or the region, that little system they have of collecting this runoff now, runs through a plastic pipe, can't get away quick enough. And at the other end, like a quarter mile away, at the other end of this dump that they've created, is this pipe. It comes out of the hill and it's eroded all the loose dirt away to show you what has been dumped there. It's timber, it's metal, it's empty 45-gallon drums and monstrous, monstrous concrete chunks. It's not a place where you can build a pumping station. So if you're concerned about who's going to be in charge when they go bankrupt, it might be some valid questions. And if you're concerned about whether or not there's going to be unpredictable weather that's going to rear its ugly head, that's pretty much a given. And I don't want to be in a position where unforeseen things, unforeseen things like this road reconstruction left me. I mean, and they said, oh, we can't fix the problem unless we know what the problem is. And with great luck, I was able to dig and find a well and get them, persuade them to come and fix my problem or I'd still be living with the flooding.
Okay.
Okay, now my frustration.
Okay.
Get ready. Okay, in 2016, I contacted Woolwich Township, because the property that we're talking about was rented out. I sent pictures of Tri-City paving. There is hundreds and hundreds and hundreds, 20 years of dumping crap across the road. Asphalt, paving bricks, cement chunks, barrels, drums. Like it's bad. And they would come in and then they would push it down the hill. When I originally moved in that house in 95, there was barely any land surface past the barn and the shed, because I had to go and herd the cows off the road back to the barn. And they barely had any room. Now you're talking hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of feet. We watched 40-foot trees being buried by garbage. That's environmental problems. And I contacted the township and no response I got from the township. I heard through the grapevine that the owner at the time was told that he had to stop, but he didn't. For two more years, it went on. Now, I can't pull up my photos off my old laptop. It keeps stopping on me. But even if you go on to Google Earth, you can see the garbage. There was propane tanks, there was gas tanks, there was diesel tanks out there. Then the other night, I read on Premier Environmental Services came out and did an inspection. And she showed pictures of the inside of that shed and inside this and, oh, well, we don't see any contaminations whatsoever. Go look on Google Earth. It shows you tons of old cars and crap and cesspools from when it was a farm and the manure and everything else. But it's like, and then I find out that the developer had issued a previous, but the township decided that it wasn't dense enough. And we live in the country. This is not Waterloo or Kitchener. If I wanted to live in Waterloo-Kitchener, I'd buy a house in Waterloo-Kitchener. But this is Saint Jacobs. Everybody complained about Tim Hortons. Oh, Tim Hortons, oh, we can't have it because it doesn't suit Saint Jacobs. So they were made to change the design of Tim Hortons to blend in with the town.
Yeah, suit the aesthetics.
But you want to put triple-stocked condos, townhouses, row houses, I don't care what you call them. Like.
Our main motivation.
Transportation to speak of in this town.
Our main motivation is that our equity is going to take a real kick.
Yeah, who's. Change on our equity. It's frustrating.
Thank you. It's frustrating. You've lived there for a long time. You've seen a lot of things happen and our staff are taking note of your concerns about the, and so is the developer, your concerns on the quality of what's underneath.
Well, it's the land there. The town too.
Please ever come to us, what we know about that land across the road.
Even I read where, according to the website, they came and talked to the neighbors about the water and everything. Hell, I'm right across from it. Nobody came to our house to ask us. We get our water from across the road, because that was his grandparents' house. So since 1945, the water's been supplied from across the road. So now, when all this goes and hits the fan, we have no water.
Okay. Thank you for coming and telling us.
I recommend anybody with concerns to walk down there to the.
To see it.
Train bridge, walk down by the train bridge and have a look at what's there, where the existing creek is and what's been put on top of it. Because it's rather disturbing.
I'll keep trying to get those pictures.
There's nothing like seeing for yourself. And staff have taken note of your concerns and your concern about the well as well. And I'm sure, I'm sure that they will be in touch with you. Our next participant is James Daniel. James here, welcome.
Welcome, welcome, all. I was going to say a few things, but it's just going to be carbon copy of Deb here. There is one other issue that I would, oh, actually, there's three that I'd like to address. Oh, next door, I meant 60, which is directly opposite.
Okay.
It's directly opposite too. Next door, neighbor to Drew and Deb. I understand that there has been a previous application for development of this property before. And I'd like councillor to say if that is correct or not, and what was the reason for the rejection of the first application? It is my understanding that the application was rejected because it wasn't dense enough. Am I correct?
Are you aware?
Sorry, I think if there was a previous application, it was before my or Victor's time, so we would have to look.
You just don't know?
Don't have the answer for that.
Could you get back to me on that?
Yep.
Thank you. Pardon me? Since, as Polycorp Development Plan, I understand that to be true. If you could verify that or deny one way or the other, I would appreciate that. There is questions about the private road and the private pumping station. I am just going on what other people say and other developments that is, shall I say, it is traditional that on these similar types of development, that there is, that's sorry, that the maintaining of the private road and the private pumping station is not in perpetuity. There is usually a time limit on it. And when that time limit expires, which my research told me is 20, 30 years, something like that, those costs revert to the local class where. Is that correct? And if it is correct, is there any language in this deal that is being signed by the property developers that includes a time clause that reverts cost to the township?
Mr. Tombray.
I'd like that inquiry and an answer to that, please.
Just answer the questions. Do you know the answer? I was trying to read your facial features there.
Sorry, I'm not understanding the question. Is the question pertaining to the condo being reverted back?
The, it's my understanding that this is a private road system and a private pumping station. Will those costs remain permanently with the developer or will they in time revert back to the township?
Through you, Madam Mayor, they would stay with the private condo corp. They would not be going back to the township.
Do you know if there's any language in the contract that's going to be in the approval that tells the Polycorp, tells any development company that they will be responsible for the cost in perpetuity?
We're not to that point yet.
But I'd just like this point to be made and made public.
Fair.
Because traditionally, from what I understand, this is what happens.
Okay, so duly noted that there needs to be some language in there?
Yeah, absolutely. And we can, through you, Madam Mayor, we'll be following up in a future report that would come back to council with the details of what the condo agreement would say. in a future report that would come back to council with the details of what the condo agreement would say.
There is the other, it was kind of a peripheral thing about the school, St. Jacobs School. This is a development, as it stands, that is going to include numerous townhouses, stacked houses. And there has come and been made before about the location of this development. And really, it's not really a part of St. Jacobs, it just happens to be a development on the side of the hill, on the west side of St. Jacobs. It's not an integral part of St. Jacobs by any means because of its geographical location. It can only really be driven to, as one of your councillors, I think, alluded to, nobody's going to walk from this development down to downtown Jacobs. They're not going to do it. And also, if this is a town, if this is a townhouse development, that's going to attract small families who are going to go to the public school. Are the public, are the public, it's a little bit like, my mind is going quicker than my mouth, sorry about that. Are the public school kids going to walk uptown, down the main street, and into the public school? Especially if the weather's cold and it's wet? No. They're going to walk down the railway track.
I suspect they'll be...
What about a safety issue on that?
I suspect they'll be bused, but that's, the school board would make those decisions.
It only takes one incident with a child on a railway track, and how does that reflect on the township and the developer? And the township's decision to allow it? Having knowledge of this potential serious problem? And how is it going to be addressed?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Daniel has the floor right now.
On the topic, I just wanted to say there was already been a pedestrian walkway installed on the train bridge, as though someone's had the foresight to plan ahead for them.
I don't know whether that's related, I don't know. But anyway, I was going to say other things, but how can you beat, how can you beat that?
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Our next part, thank you. Our next participant is Kristin Barisdale of GSP Group.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. I will keep it very brief. My name is Kristin Barisdale from GSP Group. We are the planning consultants representing Schlegel Urban Developments. We're just here to monitor this meeting and particularly as it relates to the servicing and staging and development report that is later on in this evening. So we didn't have any questions. If you have any questions of us, happy to answer them, but we're just here to monitor.
Will you be here? Are you staying until we deal with?
Yes.
Okay. If there's any questions on the Schlegel development, we'll do that later with that report then.
Great, thank you.
Unless you've got questions from... No, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We did have two people who were originally listed as registered participants but have withdrawn their request to speak. And I will now ask the clerk if there are any unregistered participants.
There are none.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the public gallery who would like to speak, sir?
Can I get you to state your name? My name is Richard Shide. I live at Nine Chris Court. I've lived there and my wife Margaret for thirty-seven years. A couple of points that need to be repeated. I have observation of thirty-seven years of all the stuff that has been dumped there. So they have done a soil report. I don't believe that soil report, first of all. So if they're going to do anything, I would be very suspect. Also, too, there is so much stuff there, and also, too, with the slope of the land, it is a big problem. But I think the bigger problem there, and this was mentioned, is the kids, the closest point of walking down the railroad tracks to the school. Now, and I mentioned in the sent-off to the notice there that you can take care of this by putting a no trespassing sign. A grade seven kid is going to listen to a no trespassing sign when it's five hundred yards versus going a kilometer and a half, visiting their friends. So CN doesn't give a rat's ass about, they're going to say it's private property. You can't go on it. The next thing being, the school board is saying, okay, we're going to talk to the kids. Talk to a grade seven kid. He's going to take the shortest. So if you want to have this development, and I'm saying no to development, but if you're going to have it, you're going to have to have a pedestrian bridge, which is safe to go across. You know how much a pedestrian bridge will go across, because you have to have it beside to go across the river. So when you have the trail and they're talking about trying to make some connection points, approximate a million dollars for a pedestrian bridge with already some infrastructure there, it'll cost at least two million, and that'll be on the taxpayers of St. Jacobs and Woolwich on us. So I really would say no to this project because of, it's, it's, it's like having a gun and saying, kids, don't use a gun. If it's sitting there, they're going to use it. And this problem is, the same thing happened in Galt. When they had the high school kids going across a trestle there. This is very unique to this area. You guys are going to run into a really big problem with all the kids going across there. And I don't know how you're going to address it. The only way you're going to have it address it is by not having this, this development there. So I'm strongly opposed to it. That's all I'm going to say. The other thing being, too, I shouldn't say that's all. Talking about the storm, back in two thousand and two, I think it was Jeremy, one of your planners, made a report on the wastewater, and he said, we've got enough capacity in Almyra for a number of hectares. Also, too, for Breslaw, we have got X number that we can do. St. Jacobs, zero, absolute zero, and that was in two thousand and two report. It's there. So people are saying, oh, we think we have capacity. Oh, we, yeah, there should be capacity. There isn't capacity. You've got records of it.
They've changed, changed how they calculated. I know you're not...
Yeah, 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 forget it. When you hear all about the storm sewers and all that stuff, you don't have the capacity.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this?
I'm Anna Karaga from Chris Court, and I support what everybody has said before me. But I do want to emphasize our concerns about the sewage because we would be very strongly affected by that in Chris Court. And the other concern I have is that the height of this new subdivision, all the water that runs off is going to be running into the corner of our property, and it's going to erode the bank. I really think, council, I don't know if you were handed out all the complaints or concerns that people made. We submitted them, and I assumed that everyone on council would have received them and been able to read the concerns that we made in writing. Perhaps you didn't get them. It might be hoots to make sure, if not, that people had been given those things. I really don't think there's been enough thought. That corporation didn't go and ask anybody around, anyone, they didn't talk to anybody in the community. Nobody came to our street. We could have raised many of those objections or our concerns at the time, so they could have taken them into consideration. But the idea of triple-stacked townhouses abutting the railway tracks is ridiculous. You really need to give some thought. I'm sure you're all very tired, you've had a long meeting, but it's, it's just not good enough. And there's many other concerns. We put them in writing, so I wasn't going to bring them all up again because I assumed you'd read them all. However, I do want to make sure that something with that storm, with the sewage is looked after because we would be affected by it. And please don't tell me that it'll be up to the condo boards or whatever to make sure that the road and the sewage is looked after. The cost of that is so high, I don't believe it will be covered. Then what happens? And also, how is that sewage from that pumping station, where is it going to join the sewer system? One of my neighbors had a young man who came around, wanted her to sell the house and told her it was going to come between her house and ours. Is such a thing possible? I'm assuming it would go up to Hawksville Road. We don't know. There are many questions, many, many questions. I raised many of them in our submission. I hope you'll take the time to read them. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a copy of all the submissions that were made, so they are in our package for us to read. Is there anyone else? Okay, yes. Okay, thank you, everyone, for being here. I heard a number of concerns about sewage, about fill, about drainage, and I know staff have listened carefully to what you've said, and they also have the written reports. Also, we're doing, we're doing another report later on, if you want to stay for a while until we get to it on staging. If you're interested in that, it will speak a little bit more to that whole area of development. I guess with no further speakers, I declare the planning-public meeting to be closed. So we'll close this part of the meeting, and we will move on to our next items.
I didn't submit.
You can... Okay. Thank you. So this is, okay, I hear a question about what happened. So, so tonight was the first presentation of the proposal, so that we could hear comments from the community, which we've heard. And now staff will go back and work with the developer and, um... Deanne, do you want to talk about timing? I don't know what your timeframe is, but...
We don't have a date to come back yet. We still need to do some review with the, the application. Anyone that has submitted, any correspondence would be added to our mailing list, and anyone else who would like to be added to the mailing list for future meetings can also do that so that they would get notified of when this will be coming back to council.
So it will come back to council. We're not making any decisions tonight. We're here to listen to you, listen to the developer, and the report will come back when all the pieces have been put together.
So what's the staging thing that you're talking about?
The staging thing is for...
Oh, that's for somebody else.
Through you, Madam Mayor, and through everyone that is here to talk about St. Jacobs. The township is bringing forward a staging of development report for allocation of number of units in St. Jacobs and Almyra, so that we'll talk about both this development as well as the other developable lands that are north of Hawksville Road, and how many units staff is proposing to allocate to each of those developments and the timing for the allocation of those units.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is present, we have one presentation and two delegations. So if you are a delegate, your timeline is posted on the agenda. There will be a timer on the screen, and you'll hear a warning sound when you have one minute left, and again, when your time is up. For all those speaking to council tonight, as a delegation, once you're finished, you can return to your seat, or virtual participants can turn their mic and video off. All are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting or leave when you wish. The first, the first item, we welcome Grand River Transit Commissioner of Transportation Services Doug Spooner and Kevin Marshall, Manager of Transit Development, to present. So this is on the GRT business plan to talk to us about what's going on with that. Welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Kevin Marshall. I'm the manager of transit development. I'm joined here by Doug Spooner, our active commissioner of transportation. Before I begin, I just want to say I had the pleasure of riding Route twenty-one up here tonight. So on behalf of GRT, thank you for the opportunity to present and working together to help make sustainable transportation the easy choice across Waterloo region. Over the next ten minutes, I'll walk you through the different sections of GRT's business plan and the proposed transit investment priorities that will help increase speed and reliability, serve new areas, and make transit easier to use for communities across Waterloo region. I did want to take a step back before we begin to quickly reflect on GRT's past twenty-five years and the transformative impact sustained investment in transit has had on our community. So, for example, in nineteen ninety-nine, you couldn't get a city bus between Cambridge and Kitchener-Woodle. And here I am tonight, having taken our express services to Light Rail to the Route twenty-one to come here tonight. And I'm here to share GRT's first business plan since the successful launch of Eye on Bus and Light Rail Transit, a record-setting ridership, strong public support for GRT to connect people, jobs, and homes across Waterloo region. GRT's business plan responds to the region's projected population growth and the transit priorities identified through the region's strategic plan, recent budget consultations, and projects by the area municipalities. And ultimately, our, our business plan will provide a roadmap for staff as we prepare transit investment proposals for the next ten years and beyond. Our guiding principles shaped our planning and public engagement efforts and focused on asking how we can make transit the easier first choice for more people across the region. So we did this to better understand how we can improve the idea of transit freedom. This is the concept that useful transit improves where you can go and what you can do in a one-hour transit trip. So you can get more time back in your day to do the things you want to do instead of trying to get where you need to go. The plan's strategic focus areas, frequency, speed, customer focus, new coverage, and simple intuitive network are listed below. And these really informed all of our transit investment priorities that I'll walk you through shortly. There are three main parts to the GRT business plan, which are supported by a new technology and fair strategy. So we have the conventional bus and train plan. We have the Mobility Plus and Qantas Transit Specialized Service Plan, and then we have the Township Transit Strategy. Each part of this plan, of the plan, has been tailored through thoughtful, region-wide engagement. So throughout the summer and fall, GRT reached out to riders, residents, partners, and staff to hear from everyone about their ideas for transit priorities for Waterloo region. Our focus was on connecting with riders and residents across every community. So we heard from more than two thousand people that we connected with at station outreach, bus ride-alongs, neighborhood events, and virtual online sessions. We also built out a robust contributor network, which you can see on the left-hand side of this image, who we consulted with on multiple occasions and who helped us amplify the public engagement opportunities. Our consultation with the Township Transit Strategy focused on virtual and in-person open houses and key community destinations in each township. And finally, we also worked really closely with our area municipalities and including the townships. For example, we worked with the Waterloo Region Economic Development Strategy Team to help hear the local needs for economic resiliency in each community. We also partnered uniquely with our Public Health Team, which provides information and health resources to underserved neighborhoods using a GRT bus. So we joined them in their outreach in every municipality to hear from new voices about their ideas for GRT. Several common themes emerged during the development of the strategic plan process as well as recent budget consultations by the region. And this included better frequency and all-day schedules across the network, reflecting our shift away from a nine-to-five community, opportunities to speed up transit trips between the cities, and expansion into new and growing areas of the region, particularly in the townships, and need to make transit more affordable for those who need it most. Some important themes I want to highlight here include our stop accessibility, which we're happy to share has been accelerated through recent budget approvals by the region in both the township service areas today as well as in our urban core areas to improve stop infrastructure. And then we also have enthusiasm for improved and new township transit options, not just for township residents, but also for city residents that are excited and encouraged to access rural destinations. And this really demonstrates the value of a region-wide transit network that we're building here. I'll now walk you through the transit investment priorities of each part of the GRT business plan. So combined, they will help make transit the easy choice by significantly expanding a service area of GRT, including transit travel times and better connecting communities across Waterloo region. So the bus and train priorities help achieve the strategic focus areas identified by riders, key contributors, area municipalities, GRT in the region. And this includes increasing frequency to ten minutes on weekdays on sixteen key routes in Cambridge, Kitchener, and Waterloo, adding trips to make schedules more intuitive and reflect our shift away from a nine-to-five community. and reflect our shift away from a nine-to-five community, introducing rapid highway services to give riders up to 20 minutes back in their day, expanding the service by bringing new routes to growing industrial areas and residential communities in Cambridge, Southwest Kitchener, North Waterloo, and launching more late-night services and moving towards the introduction of a 24/7 service network on key routes to support shift workers, students and core areas. The key priorities for our mobility plus and Kiwanis Transit Plan include meeting and for mobility plus services and targeting no unmet trips with new staff, modern technologies and a bigger fleet, extending mobility plus service hours in coordination with GRT's overnight service expansion and enhancing the mobility plus and Kiwanis Transit customer experience. Uh, GRT has developed a township transit strategy that responds to requests for better access to and from rural destinations among township and city residents, while also recognizing each township's unique community character. So the goal is to provide residents with better access to essential services and employment opportunities. The future township transit network includes enhancements to existing fixed routes in Wilmont and Woolwich, future fixed routes for North Dumfries and Wellesley to connect to GRT's core network, uh, the introduction of a new fixed route service to Bresla and the region of Waterloo International Airport that connects to GO services and other internet intercity services at Sports World Station and Kitchener Central Station, and the introduction of on-demand transit zones and will be exploring commingling of services in each township to expand GRT's rural service area. So combined, our township transit priorities dramatically expand the service area of GRT to nearly all of Waterloo region. GRT also has a fair strategy focused on diversifying revenues, supporting service improvements and promoting affordable access for those who need it most by providing support to families and caregivers with the introduction of free transit for children 12 years and under, enhancing GRT's affordable transit program to provide bigger discounts to those with the greatest financial need, matching future fare increases to annual service expansion, inflation and comparable transit systems, and supporting our local workforce by expanding business account programs with GRT's new mobile app, GRT Pay. So the transit priorities of the GRT business plan serve as an important upstream strategy to grow with care and unlock tremendous potential benefits for Waterloo region. So for example, approximately 400,000 people and 200,000 jobs today are within 800 meters of the proposed frequent transit network. Uh, new coverage is also proposed for Southeast Cambridge residential communities, Cambridge industrial areas, Southwest Kitchener and North Waterloo. And we have transit options proposed for every township. Compared to today, we improve transit freedom across the region. So the average rider can reach about 38,000 more people and 15,000 more jobs within a one-hour transit trip with this network. Commuters can save over 20 minutes for Cambridge to Waterloo trips. Overall, transit trips become more competitive and more affordable compared to cars or rideshare. And this is what's so important during affordability crisis. So our future transit network can help save people from needing to buy and maintain a second car. Uh, this plan help can help unlock over $1,000 in monthly income that would otherwise be trapped in car ownership and maintenance costs. So good transit means that more people have more money left in their pocket to live their life. The GRT business plan will be our playbook to work better with each municipality to achieve our shared priorities for sustainable transportation. So the transit supportive policies and programs in the regional and area municipal land use and transportation plans are really critical to help us maximize the ridership potential of the GRT business plan, the transit investment priorities I shared tonight, and really our shared goals for a livable community. So next stops, which is my attempt at a good pun. Uh, staff have provided an information update to regional council and they're sharing tonight's presentation with every, uh, interested municipal council. And GRT will be seeking regional council's endorsement of this plan, uh, in June. So thank you very much for the opportunity to present tonight. And we're both here to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Questions? Counselor Shwent.
Thanks for that, Sarah. That's exciting to see big things happening in the region for GRT. But also thank you for coming to Elmira and Woolwich Township. And GRT is probably not number one on a lot of my constituents' minds right now. So Mr. Spooner, you're here. I've got to take advantage of this opportunity to talk about keeping buses on time coming to Elmira. Route 21 is an important part of you. We can't do that where Arthur Street is right now. We need that Elmira bypass. We need that reconstruction happening that was talked about before I was born. So I'm wondering, looking at timelines, gates to GRT, can we get something similar for Elmira and Woolwich that meets our needs up here that can tie into your GRT system? I really did appreciate the GRT presentation, but I'm paid to talk about Elmira and Woolwich on this one.
Uh, through you, Mayor. Thank you for the question. It is, uh, you know, part of my, part of my remit is to talk, uh, roads as well. So, uh, as you know, we've got, uh, two projects underway, uh, in the corridor. You've referenced, there's the Arthur Street redesign, um, which is continuing. Uh, we're working, uh, pretty closely with, with your team to make sure that we're advancing, uh, something that meets both regional and, and local needs. Um, in terms of the bypass, uh, we are in options development right now. We shared, uh, I think that was late last year, the, the three options. Those are now in, in detailed design, uh, looking to bring those back later this year for further public consultation, uh, that will include, uh, obviously the, the routing and, and some of the costing information as we get further in. So, uh, two projects that are, that are important to me and my team. Uh, I don't have timelines, which I appreciate as you're asked. I'm happy to share those, uh, through, through your regional council rep, uh, as soon as I have them. I, I know I have them for Arthur Street. I'll just check on the bypass ones and I'll share those. Thank you.
Thank you and thank you. I, I knew you could handle the question and I, and I didn't put him up to it either. Honest, honest.
We've got, we've got a good advocate here for, uh, both of those projects.
That's right. Um, I do have a question on the GRT piece. Do you ever work with employers to look at, um, flexed routing and routing for, uh, specific to employers? I know we've had a lot of, uh, requests from particularly, uh, the stockyards area with the, uh, with hotels and, and getting staff there. Can you speak to some of that or?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm, I'm actually going to step out of the way because the person responsible for that program up until about three weeks ago, when he became manager, is standing behind me. So I, I have less expertise. I'll let Kevin take that one.
From a, from a programmatic piece, uh, I had the opportunity to work with a lot of workplaces across Waterloo region with, uh, GRT's, uh, TravelWise program, which, uh, program in the region. Uh, we build out a corporate account programming with organizations. Uh, that's one of the key, uh, uh, focus areas when we look at our on-demand services as well too, that we're proposing for the township transit areas. See great potential there and, and linking those two pieces. So yes, definitely something we can continue to explore. Uh, I think one of the pieces we do see is the opportunity of the, the employment and tourist potential of, of the St. Jacobs market area for sure. Thank you.
So stay tuned.
Yes, yeah, maybe Mayor, if I may add just quickly, um, the, the region has had great success with the UPAS program, which is a partnership with the two universities and the college in terms of, uh, we set a discounted rate, uh, UPAS meaning universal pass. So every student opts in through their student fees at a discounted rate, but the region receives the revenue at the start of each term. Uh, and we're in a contractual relationship. And so that lets us share more information, uh, or the school to share more information with us about the number of students. Uh, so when we talk about the TravelWise program and employer engagement, we're actually looking at, is there a corporate UPAS program? Uh, there aren't any in Canada trying to develop one and see if we can get into that style of relationship where we can share information early and often, uh, and really trying to get down to the nitty-gritty details of shift times, uh, you know, as organizations potentially move to third shift. Uh, and those are the types of details where you can appreciate the reliability of transit and, and appreciate the counselor's note about, uh, on-time performance. It's a, it's a focus for us, um, but making sure that that conversation can happen because the worst thing that can happen is an employee who arrives late to work, right? We can't have that. So that, that corporate UPAS program, we're pretty excited about. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much for coming in and your patience as we got through the first part of our agendas. Thanks. Um, next, municipal digital sign fees and charges waiver request. Hearts Open for Everyone. Oh, bef, bef. Just stay sitting for a minute. Pick a seat anywhere. I, I'm going to ask Director of Corporate Services Jeff Smith to present the staff report first. I should read all the notes before.
Thank you, Mayor Shantz. I will be brief. In, in the report, we, uh, we described sort of what we've been doing with the sign since it was installed. I think i- in summary, it's been quite successful. Um, we anticipated that groups would come forward asking for fee waivers. And of course, we, um, we allowed council to do that when we, uh, when we brought in the policy. Ms. Cooper, on behalf of Hope, has, uh, requested a year, um, a year fee waiver. Uh, when we looked at the request, we sort of said, oh, we're, we're sort of halfway through this year. We could do half of this year and half of next year. Or, um, we could do just this year and ask Ms. Cooper to come back in December, January. Um, or what we settled on, uh, was, uh, the staff recommendation, which is, is to approve, uh, the request for the remainder of the council term, uh, if council wishes to do that. So really, uh, that's my introduction. Uh, Ms. Cooper is a much better advocate for, uh, the work that Hope is doing. So I'm sure she will describe, uh, how this could benefit the organization.
Ms. Cooper. Welcome, Abby Cooper from Hearts Open for Everyone. Oh, press the button again.
Good evening, Mayor Shantz and Member of the Council. My name is Abby Cooper, as, as you heard, and I'm the founder of Hope, Hearts Open for Everyone. Thank you for having me. I'm here today to request, uh, your support in waiving the township's digital sign fee so that we can promote two years of our free programs, including the Third and the Fourth Annual Multicultural Festival of Elmira, also known as MFE. While the cost of the township is minimal, the potential impact on visibility and inclusion um, and connection across Woolwich is significant. So Hope is a grassroots volunteer-driven, not-for-profit that's deeply rooted in Woolwich and it focuses on inclusion and belonging. We challenge discrimination and we celebrate the rich diversity that exists around us all. Everything we do is grounded in community care. Our programs are free, accessible and thoughtfully curated based on our community's needs. In the past year, Hope has connected with over 1,500 people through free workshops and events, many of which have been held at the Woolwich Memorial Center. Our reach is growing fast with over 65,000 people engaged online, a 30% boost in email subscribers and more than 3,000, um, active followers discovering the vibrant work happening here in our rural township. Our impact is being recognized across the region from school boards, sharing our programs to invitations to sit on regional planning tables, showing just how needed and valued this work is. We're proud that our work directly supports the township's goals on connection, care and growth. Whether it's building belonging or celebrating culture, we're here to make sure Woolwich feels like home for everyone. So our programming is varied and intentional with indigenous-led workshops on reconciliation to allyship training, anti-racism education, youth workshops, wellness activities, and of course, the MFE, which drew over 800 attendees last year. We're not just reaching more people, we're also breaking down isolation, fostering local pride and bridging divides. This helps individuals realize they're not alone and that there is a place for them in this community. The spaces we create help people feel seen, welcomed and empowered. One of our volunteers recently said, "It's the first time I felt like I belonged in Elmira. Hope gave me a way to give back and be seen." That's the kind of impact that we're aiming for. We want everyone in Woolwich, including people of all races, genders and abilities, to not just know that they belong, but to feel it in every space that they enter. So we've built inclusive, meaningful programs, but one of our biggest barriers is visibility. The digital sign would help close a critical gap in outreach, allowing us to reach more people, especially seniors, newcomers, youth and rural communities, families who aren't online. Our workshops average 35 participants and have connected with 1,200 residents so far. With added visibility, we can, um, we could boost attendance by up to 40%. And even a 5% increase means over 1,300 new people finding connection and purpose through Hope. Many still say, "I didn't know this was happening in town." So this sign gives us a way to change that and reaching those who live, commute or pass through Woolwich daily. We're helping shift Woolwich from a bedroom community to a place where people feel like they belong, not just at home, but in the heart of their community. That's the kind of impact visibility can spark. Every dollar waived by the township directly supports free events and programs that encourage people to stay local, support businesses and engage in their community. Hope offers the only consistent culturally-inclusive programs in Woolwich outside of school settings. This visibility plays an important role in attracting new families, talent and investment. People are more likely to settle in a community when they see it actively promoting inclusion and standing behind those, uh, behind those values. We're helping to foster a Woolwich where people don't just live, but thrive. And we're doing it without asking for new program funding. We're simply asking for the tools to continue making a meaningful impact. Hope's work directly supports the township's strategic priorities by ways of supporting access to social services, strengthening community relationships, championing diverse voices and promoting inclusive storytelling. Our programs and events celebrate the evolving heritage of Woolwich through arts, food and traditions. When people feel like they belong, they invest back into their community by volunteering, shopping locally, raising families here and contributing to a more vibrant Woolwich. So waiving the sign fee may seem like a small gesture, but it would make a lasting impact. It would help residents who feel disconnected see themselves reflected in community life and feel a deeper sense of belonging. We're supported by passionate volunteers, my volunteers over there, and community partners, but without charitable status, our advertising budget is limited. In-kind support like access to the digital sign will without costing the township a cent. Extending this support through the, through 2026 would show bold leadership in making inclusion and wellbeing a priority. And it would remove a real barrier for those who need connection the most. So as one resident said, "There has to be growth within the economy, but also growth within people's hearts." So this small gesture helps us do this, do both. So I just wanted to thank you all for hearing me out and, uh, considering this request. Um, people are noticing what we're doing. They're showing up and the more visible we become, the more people we can reach, include and empower. We hope the township will stand with us by helping us reach the people who need it most. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Abby. And I mean, we always talk about community being built on participation and inclusion and having opportunities for, for people to meet together. And, um, I, I just really appreciate your leadership over the last number of years in starting Hope and, uh, getting it up and running and all the different, um, all the different workshops and events that you lead. So thank you for that. Are there any questions? Counselor Shwent.
I'll echo the thanks from the volunteers for this organization, all the work you're doing because it's important. So I'd move the recommendation and also add in a request that staff come up with a report at a later date on how staff can administer these fee waivers for nonprofits going forward. I don't think everyone needs to come to council.
Um, is this, are you second?
Yeah, I'm seconding the motion. Uh, I've had a very similar thought as Counselor, um, Shwent over there. Especially organizations that are already receiving funding from the township. I think it makes a lot of sense to include a signed fee waiver in addition to any support in kind that we're giving. Uh, so definitely second that recommendation, uh, and the request for a staff report.
I'll refer to Director of Corporate Services to, uh, speak to how that can be administered.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Shantz. I had two thoughts on this. Uh, the first is, uh, council did provide staff the option to, uh, waive fee requests under a thousand dollars. Um, since the request was multi-year, we did think it was best to bring it back to council. But in the future, if it was a single-year request or, or if it hap- one-year request that happened at the start of a year, then I think we could have done that at the staff level. Um, but the other piece I think is, um, now that we have the sign in place, I think this is really just a first time, um, first time thing. Because, um, what I would recommend that Ms. Cooper do is when she applies for her, uh, annual grant, that that just becomes part of the ask at, at that point. And then, uh, if she asks for a grant and she asks for a fee waiver, they can be sort of bundled together. Um, but we can always add that recommendation, uh, sorry, we can add the request to report back in the resolution and we can. request to report back in the resolution and we can look at that further if you'd still like me to. Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a tar and chip update, and we have Delegate Alicia Jones.
Welcome. Thank you. Is there any update to be provided before I begin?
Three Mayor Shantz to council and the delegate, I guess. So currently still working on the issue. What I can say is that we do have cleanup plans for either later this week, but with the weather probably not until early next week for the sweeping. So that is going to take place shortly here. But that would be the only update I would have at this particular time, so.
And would that be for the roads only?
So that would be, I believe the way I understood this was, we're not going on to private property, but if people push it to the road edge, we will take care of that. So just a little bit of work on that end to get it to the road. But then we'll take, I believe within two meters of the road edge is kind of what we're looking to pick up. So if anybody can get it close, we'll grab it. If it's in a pile, obviously it makes it easier for us to see it and take it, take it away. Okay?
Okay. With the grass growth, you can't see it. So good evening, everyone. After my last presentation, I feel that you understand what the struggles of the neighbors of Conestoga have endured this year with the tar and chip. But I would also like to discuss just how much it's affecting us. After entire weekends dedicated to attempting to clean this up and personally rewire my own lawnmower, it's still not complete. It is that much piled. I personally have had to spend over a hundred dollars in supplies to rewire my lawnmower and in the meantime borrow my neighbor's lawnmower because it is rapid growth time for grass. The comment made last time from you about treating our roads similar to gravel really just isn't sitting well, and it's honestly not accurate. We didn't purchase properties on gravel roads. And our yards are not set up as if we were on gravel roads. This is my first time experiencing tar and chip, but after driving on gravel roads, I think they're actually less messy. After learning that there is a discussion of turning more roads in the future into tar and chip, I'm here to make a plea that none of our roads be tar and chip. I'm here to say that the residents of Conestoga are ready to take full action against any future tar and chip applications. After discussing with many neighbors, I know that this is not a new concern brought forward. A neighbor on Grand View specifically has told me that this is an ongoing issue for over thirty years. Every complaint or discussion point gets addressed with a, in her words, "simple brush-off and here's some grass seed to cover up the mess." That seems like a blanket solution and not a real improvement. Improvement really can't happen without a change, and we of Conestoga are ready for a change. Just because something has been this way for a long time does not mean that it needs to continue to be this way. Please don't think of this in terms of money and efficiency. At this point, I would really like you to think of this from our experience and not a funding perspective. If you were truly experiencing what many of us are experiencing, I know that this would not really be up for consideration or vote or debate for more tar and chip. It is kind of obvious that if you're making a decision regarding more tar and chip, you don't live on a property that has tar and chip on it. Local businesses that I've spoken to are also frustrated. Everyone who's on a tar and chip property, or at least experiencing it, is really quite frustrated because there is injuries, there's property damage, in addition to just simply inconvenience and frustration. I've also noticed that the newer builds in Conestoga that maybe have a little more affluent homeowners, their roads are all paved, while the older roads are still tar and chip. It would be nice to both see some consistency and and really be reflective that the whole village would like to be seen as one and not the older streets versus the newer richer streets. I understand that asphalt is more expensive, but at this point, we would like to know exactly how much more expensive is it? Because there are times in life where a higher price is more than justified to eliminate frustration. I understand that tax dollars only go so far, but if lower funds and lower quality can be made to some things, I would like to say that tar and chip is not one of those things. On April first, at the last meeting, I was told that I would be given an update within two weeks' time. It has now been six weeks' time. I've not been told anything. None of the problems have been communicated until just now, this evening. I will fully respect that there has been a sewage backup in St. Jacobs and for infrastructure and safety-wise. I can very much respect that that can take more priority than roads at this point. Health and safety is not something to take lightly. However, myself and the other residents of Conestoga would greatly appreciate some action to eliminate tar and chip entirely. Thank you.
Are there questions for the delegation? No? Okay. Thank you for coming in, Counselor Bryant. For Jared?
Thank you. Jared, you may not have the answer tonight to this one, but do you know what the cost difference is between tar and chip and a paved road?
Three Mayor Shantz to Counselor Bryant. So I think first off, I know that wasn't the question, but I think there's a few things to say. I wasn't here at the last meeting. And, you know, sympathize with the situation because I would say that inherently, we have had success with the surface treatment program. But in Conestoga, for whatever reason, we have had challenges. There's no question about it. Grand View Drive, we had some similar challenges. And there was changes made at the time. I want to be clear that tar and chip or surface treatment, as it's called, is a viable alternative for hardtop, and it's typically the first piece to convert from gravel to a hard surface. And the reason that it is viable is deemed to be what's called a flexible pavement. And that typically, it's in older parts. We have it in St. Jacobs, Conestoga, Winterburn, and parts of Bresla. And the reason that it exists and because it's cost-effective is because the base is generally poor. Meaning that asphalt needs a strong base, it needs a granular layer, typically at least two feet. But that's dependent on what the underlying soil is. So if, when you have older built-up areas, that's generally not happened. It's gone from gravel to a hardtop of some form. So surface treat and why you see it continually repeated is for that very fact. It's incredibly cost-effective. So if we take Conestoga or St. Jacobs, probably our two biggest spots that are in settlement areas with built-up properties, you're going to be looking at, if you're going in there, you're going to be looking at potentially curb and gutter. You definitely have to improve drainage if you're going to throw hot-mix asphalt down as opposed to surface treat. That becomes critically important. Drainage, drainage, drainage is the single most important part with any road system. But albeit with the investment that asphalt affords to. And then, you know, that's the challenge. So you've got these, what we call semi-urban environments, there's no curb and gutter. You know, you've got quasi-ditching out there or poor drainage is the case in some areas of Conestoga. So surface treat becomes a very cost-effective use. And generally, when it performs and acknowledge full stop that we have a performance issue, hundred percent. And unfortunately, that we've been snaked in Conestoga now twice. So that, you know, that doesn't look good and I want to sympathize there for sure and acknowledge that. So there was a report done by my predecessor in twenty sixteen who did look at that cost comparison, and that was right around the time that I think Grand View Drive was happening and we were having challenges. So there was a review and there is a council report that's available for public consumption. And I would say generally, it's, 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 uh, it's accurate. The comparison wasn't for, and I want to be clear, the township has what's called a maintenance paving program. And a maintenance paving program is simply about two and a half inches of asphalt. And you know your base isn't perfect, but it's, it's, it's not a hot-mix resurfacing. So that's important to note. Hot-mix resurfacing is generally two lifts of asphalt. That's what every new subdivision gets. And then you're in a cycle of replacing that, and you're doing that on average roughly every seventeen years when you're doing a resurfacing. A maintenance paving is saying the road is generally in need of repair, but we're going to throw a riding surface down. And we've done that in Birdland area of Elmira. So there was an instance where unfortunately development did not provide proper road structure, and we've been in this cycle. So there's, you know, infrastructure renewal that needs to happen at some point in the future there too. So what I'm trying to do is paint a picture that we have an infrastructure deficit, as we know with asset management, planning, and so forth. This is a significant enhancement to go from a surface-treated condition to a paved condition. So the report in twenty sixteen looked at a maintenance paving situation where we would potentially come in and add some gravel and hot-mix asphalt. But it was four-point-two times the cost of surface treat. So in this instance, if we looked at the three hundred thousand dollars invested for the entire program last year, that turns into about one-point-three million dollars to do something similar in a paving fashion. So I would say cost prohibitive, given that you're really throwing potentially good money after a poor drainage area, and that's kind of why we've been in this cycle. So you're not alone in Conestoga. St. Jacobs has similar concerns there as well. But those would be the two predominant areas with settlements. So I think that's information of council's interest in the report or anybody in the member of the public's interest in the report. We have a report that was done. Forget the exact numbers, but the percentage, we will, we would say is still valid, I would, I would say. And there was a bit of a look at that. So certainly something we can take a little deeper dive into. But we struggle and we know surface treat is a challenge in urban areas. It works very well in rural because you have higher speeds, typically higher volumes, and that kind of allows things to knit in. I can't get into specifics, and there's a reason that we haven't done an update because we still have contractual obligations that we are working through. But we have a situation where we had poor-performing material here. So that's as best we can sort of say it at this time.
Thanks, Jared. Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
We have a number of consent items for approval. Does anyone want to pull anything? Have a mover into a seconder for them. Counselor Bryant, Counselor Burgess, all those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. We have no unfinished business. We do have a tender award for the Weigl Drain, and Mr. Pupay, you are up.
Thank you, Mayor Shantz. Three to members of council. So we have two reports back-to-back, both similar in nature, both the Weigl Drain. And these were successful grant applications with ICIP program, which is the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program. So that is a combination of both federal and provincial funding to the tune of about seventy-three-point-three percent. That's not insignificant. So the township has to come up with, what is the difference there? It's about twenty-six-point-seven percent. So very cost-effective. The Weigl Drain system is a deemed natural water course. It is not a municipal drain, so I want to be clear, even though we've tagged it Weigl Drain, there's no status under the Drainage Act. So it's very important to understand. And the headwaters are west of Floridale Road and make their way all the way to the Canada Jake. So it's a huge component of Elmira, is caught up by this catchment area. And it's one that we have struggled with over time. So hence why ICIP funding came along, and this was an excellent opportunity. So here's the good news story. I went for tender and incredibly competitive tender. I think we had about nine bidders. And between first and fourth, and typically you don't say those spreads, but that's ten percent between first and fourth. So very, very competitive market. TAA Construction is what the, the award report we're requesting that council do award to TAA Construction, Inc. at a total cost of just over eight hundred thousand dollars. And that we retain Montrose Environmental Solution, Canada, Inc. for the contract administration and inspections and post-construction services for just under thirty-seven thousand dollars. With that said, this would be our first time cleaning out a stormwater management pond on our own. Stormwater management ponds are typically always cleaned out by the developer, and those are handed over for assumption to the township. But this would be our first go at a cleanout. Of note, we are fairly under budget, as shown in the report as well. We were estimating a higher number. And so, you know, that's afforded us, afforded us some opportunities as well, as contained in the report that I believe there's about seven hundred thousand dollars potentially available too. And we have a number of other culvert areas and pinch points along the Weigl Drain system that we will be looking to, to move on. And there is time restraints. We have to be substantially performed by October of next year. So obviously, we're going to be moving on, on design work immediately and looking to, to select the next project for tender. I think with that too, the report contained Frank Mity's removal. One thing for, to note, they're contentious typically, pond removals. It's not understood that it's, it is a piece of infrastructure that should be looked at, no different than a water main system or a pump house for that matter. It is a, you know, it's a bit of a misnomer when you say pond. It's a stormwater management facility is really what it is. It's there to provide flood protection and mitigation as well as quality control. And that's what we are looking to revitalize and renew and gain that quality and quantity control back. But with that, habitat does form, and the Ministry of Natural Resources requires euthanizing of, of that aquatic habitat in that pond. There are surveys that done, that are done and complete. But typically, you find invasive species, even native species, but they're diseased generally in those environments. So that is a requirement. We have done a good job of public engagement. We've obviously notified the surrounding area, but we've also included this in the Engage Waterloo page, as well as posted ads in the Observer paper to try to get that message out as much as possible to the public. Appreciating. So just for council's benefit too, you may get calls, obviously, and, and that, that's something that we wanted to give you that information for. Contingency is always contained. We have about a hundred thousand dollars contained in that, and that is included in the total cost price. And I believe with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions, Councilmember.
Thank you, and thank you for addressing the vegetation. I know it, it's going to be a shock to people when, when they see that coming out. I wonder if you want to speak to, to what will be done to enhance it when the clean is done?
Well, thank you, Mayor Shantz and three to council. So the plan is definitely to, to have a planting plan done that would meet current requirements and revitalize that area. So we're not just going to dig this out and leave barren soil and then have that erode. So there is a planting plan that's all part and parcel to utilizing that ICIP funding, and we will rejuvenate that and look after that. And, and I think for council's benefit, it's, it's, it's another underfunded piece of infrastructure that once we make this investment and do this work, we need to keep on top of it and not let it go. I think that's some of the challenges we've experienced in the past. So we want to make sure that we have proper programming and are allocating proper funding to be able to maintain that going forward.
Thank you. Other questions? Counselor Kado.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm kind of scared to ask this question, but do we have a rough timeline of the other stormwater drains that we're going to need to clean out, considering this is a rather large investment that we need to make? I mean, it's great that we got some funding from upper levels of government, but are we going to be looking at a new drain every other year?
Three, Mayor Shantz, Counselor Kado. I don't have the exact figures, but we have approximately twenty-three, twenty-four stormwater management facilities of various ages and conditions. Generally speaking, we're fortunate enough to have relatively new infrastructure. It's helpful, but you're right. I mean, what we haven't been doing, I guess, is, is appropriately funding for those appropriate times. So every pond is a bit unique, and we do need to be doing surveying and monitoring in accordance with the MECP, and they're downloading for the environmental compliance approval programming that's now in our care and control. So there is mandatory monitoring requirements. But I guess the best I could do is sort of stay tuned. There will be more information coming to council, and we can look to put a bit of a financial plan together on what that might look like.
Yeah, and that's perfect. The reason I ask is, I mean, because we had such success getting some funding, I have kind of a, almost an order of what the projects are next. So when those funding opportunities come up, we're ready to kind of apply to them and get that funding because this is relatively big expense, not a lot of, residents may not see a lot of positivity out of it, right? A million-dollar investment in essence to clean out a pond. So I'm just trying to be mindful of how we can bring in upper levels of government to help us with this. That's more or less what I was getting at.
And just maybe through you, Mayor Shantz, to council too. It's something that's been talked about at this table, and we know that other communities, Kitchener and Waterloo have both adopted stormwater utility rates. That's an opportunity as well, and obviously those municipalities realize that there were challenges with that infrastructure. Again, we're not to the same scale, but you know, that's something also to, to look at is we know that always upper government funding levels aren't necessarily sustainable funding models, given that the nature of politics and different parties in place, so, and what they decide to fund. So anyway, there, there's more to that story and stay tuned, that we have lots of discussion to have.
Someone like to move the motion? Counselor Bryant, Counselor Burgess, all those in favor? Thank you. That's carried. And did you want to move on to the next one?
Sure do. Thank you. Three, Mayor Shantz, to council. So we have another tender award, Weigl Drain. It's just at the Outfall location of the stormwater management pond. There were some synergies here. Again, very competitive process. In this case, I think we had seven bidders, but the spread between first and fourth place was 5.6%, $21,000 on the 300. So again, incredibly competitive. The award is being recommended to TAA Construction. Obviously there were some synergies there with them doing the stormwater management pond and being successful. They look to pick up this headwall work as well. So this headwall work is at the MCC parking lot. And we've done work on Snyder Avenue North. So we've done all that other infrastructure leading to the discharge, which ultimately goes to Dunky Street. That is another location that we're going to be looking at exploring with the remaining ICIP and the other location will be Duke Street. So just for clarity, those are the two sort of sections that we're looking at currently. But this piece will, will address a longstanding headwall issue. I think when I showed up in 2012, we knew that this headwall was in disrepair, but it was again, getting funding and, and other priorities. So thankfully we're able to address that through this process and, and have, have that contractor do that work. It is a corrugated steel pipe. We typically don't look to install those and we are going to be replacing that with an elliptical concrete pipe. And the reason you go elliptical typically is just because of, of heights and, and cover challenges. So that's what's being proposed here and obviously we've looked at capacity as well. So there is a contingent, contingency amount contained in this tender award as well. And we're asking council to award to TA for just south of $340,000 and retain GEI consultants for the, the engineering, or the, sorry, the contract administration, construction and post-construction services at just over $24,000. And I think with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions, Councilmember.
Questions? Mover, seconder? Counselor Schwint, Counselor Bryant, all those in favor? That was carried. Thank you. We have a number of bylaws on the agenda. I'm not going to read them, but if someone would like to move and second them. Counselor Kado, Counselor Burgess, all those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. That brings us to the end of the council portion of the meeting. We do have a committee meeting to follow. So we'll take a quick five-minute recess and we will be back to start committee of the whole and Counselor Bryant will be chairing that.
Good evening. We are now meeting as Committee of the Whole for items that require more debate and discussion. We will not be making final decisions on these items, but proposing recommendations for the next council meeting. If anyone in the community has feedback on these recommendations, we encourage you to reach out to staff or submit comments to council before a final decision is made at the next meeting. So the first item on our agenda will be DS 09 2025 1470 Cedar Springs Road site alteration fees. First up is Manager of Development Engineering Lori Fox to present our staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee. On behalf of Development Services, I'm here this evening to present Committee of the Whole report DS 9-2025. This report is in response to a deputation to council on May 4th earlier this year, named "Reducing Site Alteration Fees: A Path to Sustainable Land Use." At that time Connor Davis of Excess Soil Solutions presented information on fees associated with site alteration permits. Example, project comparison and details of the Cedar Spring proposal. Connor was proposing a reduction in site alteration fees down to 20 cents per cubic meter. According to the March 4th presentation, the owner of 1470 Cedar Springs Road is proposing to fill in a low area of the property, which is a formal gravel pit, with imported fill. This would result in additional agricultural uses on the property. I understand that a representative for the owner from Steadman Evans will be presenting an update to the proposal this evening and has reduced the amount of needed fill from 250,000 cubic meters to 200,000 cubic meters, following a study that they did and some measurements. The chart on page 3 of your report is based on the higher volumes that we had at the time. We just got this lower number recently. Given the size of this project, the site alteration bylaw identifies its activity as a commercial fill project and as such, a permit must be issued by council if deemed appropriate. For non-commercial fill permits, so in other words, a project involving fill of less than 10,000 cubic meters, the township fees and charges by law provides for an application fee of $1,000 plus a reducing graduated environmental impact fee, starting at $2 and reducing to $1 based on imported fill volumes. With the 2024 update to the site alteration bylaw, staff reviewed the site alteration fees from approximately 25 municipalities, including 12 that like us include per cubic meter fees as part of their fee schedule. The average per cubic meter fee of those municipalities is about $1.30 per cubic meter. It should be noted that the per cubic meters are placed in an environmental impact reserve account that funds non-recoverable costs to the township related to site alteration. With the recent presentation that we received from Steadman Evans and included in this evening's agenda, I updated the chart to include their new proposal shown now on the screen. There we go. So what you can see I did there was I just added two more columns to that chart. So the first two columns represent that original 250,000 cubic meters and you can see the total was going to be 254,000 about there. That would have been the fees for the project based on the 250,000 cubic meters. Then beside that, we put the total that they were proposing at that 20 cents per cubic meter level, which would have been around the $62,000 range. Now with the update today that Steadman Evans is going to present, it has a lower volume and they are proposing a 50 cents per cubic meter, which Matt can correct me if I'm wrong, should result in fees of around $110,000 for that project. Reducing environmental impact fees will result in shortfalls in available funds to cover hauling-related damage to municipal infrastructure and other non-recoverable costs. Without this funding source, expensive repairs and costly challenges related to site alteration would need to be funded through general tax revenue. In conclusion, staff recommends that the environmental impact fee assessed to this project, follow the fees and charges by law for imparted fill and remain in place for the remainder of the project. Staff further recommends that if the property with this project, a comprehensive site alteration agreement following recommendations in the site alteration bylaw is developed for this commercial fill project and that the agreement is presented to council for final approval. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you Lori. Does staff have any questions? Start with Mayor Shawson, work down the line.
Thank you. Thanks Lori. I, this obviously isn't my business and I haven't tried to put a business case together. I think the one thing that we want small, smaller operators or landowners to be able to do is rehabilitate. And so I just wonder, has there been any sort of comparison of costs and benefit? I know, I think we talked about that when you first presented the fees, but I wonder if you can speak to that at all?
So through the chair to the mayor, do you mean benefit to?
I'm, so I understand our need to maintain our roads and to take care of that part. From a point of view of rehabilitating land, is there a business case to be made? And do you, and maybe, maybe I'm, maybe I'm not being fair in asking you that, but do you have anything that would help me to see that piece of it, that side of it?
There are two, sort of two kinds of site alteration, especially in our municipality. We have just what I would call minor site alteration where a landowner needs to either maybe add a property or to, or to fill in a smaller hole in their property, a little area. And that's covered off in the, in our site alteration bylaw and we do issue permits from time to time for that. And the fees for those tend to be a little less than obviously this bigger, this bigger project. So then that brings us to these commercial fill operations where these are projects that last for multiple years usually and involve volumes and truckloads in the thousands. And I think that we have to take, obviously weigh benefits to property owners with risk to the township. And that's what this recommendation does. It weighs those risks. As I noted, we did look at what other municipalities do because site alteration is actually a fairly new concept for municipalities. It's really only been looked at in these fashions for maybe the past 10, 15 years. The province did introduce some legislation beginning a few years ago that helps to reduce risks for municipalities, but it doesn't totally eliminate it. So although the benefits are there for the landowners and we do encourage projects like this to go forward, we are in favor if they are a benefit to the owner. We still have to consider the risks to the township and the costs associated with a big project like this.
Councillor Burgess and then Councillor Caddell.
Thank you. Through you Chair Bryant. We're talking a lot about risk. I just wonder from a township perspective, if we're looking at a neighboring property, like if it's in close proximity or it was, like we're doing a lot of barn builds around here in this rural area, so there's leftover fill there. Is there any consideration to lower fees? If it's again, within a certain distance within the township on active ag land, that's assuming not contaminated, those sorts of things?
That's through the chair to the councillor. Yes, the bylaw does actually allow for a reduction in, in the fees or actually elimination of the fees for fill that is generated in the township. So we really do encourage that. That's a really good way to sort of lessen our liability maybe. It's not to say that we wouldn't necessarily have any contaminated fill in the township, but we do have a sense of comfort in when, when the fill does come from a local source. Easier for us to, to check on and, and verify that source. So there is some consideration given in the bylaw for fill sites that are less than 10,000 cubic meters. And then that graduated reducing fee also is a way that we give consideration to projects that have large volumes of fill that they need. I know that in the past, representatives for this applicant have stated that they would try to get some local fill when that's available and we, obviously we would encourage that. But there's not an actual reduction for a, a commercial fill project that considers local sourced fill.
If I can follow up. So we do have an exception, but not for this type of property that's getting the fill?
Correct. The, the site alteration bylaw, the exemptions in it don't really apply to commercial fill sites. They're a different type of project. They are large, like I said, in, in volume. So that exemption is only usually for the first thousand cubic meters as well. So in this case, it's a very tiny, it would represent a little tiny, a very tiny exemption of their 200,000 cubic meters.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate that. And I guess my initial thoughts would be looking more into it, even though it's commercial as you're stating. Still looking at having an exception there because it is going to be ag land at the end of the day. But I guess I can listen to the rest of council on that.
Thanks Chair. Through you. So Lori, thanks for that presentation. In your research, you said that the average fee was about $1.30 and I'm just wondering if that took into account the whole range of projects or if that was limited to the 10,000 cubic meters and beyond? I'm just trying to get a sense of what that average entails because my assumption, and it's just an assumption only, is that maybe not a majority, but quite a few of these are smaller infill projects, which is going to charge the higher fee. So I'm just trying to get a sense on these commercial, these large-scale commercial projects over 10,000 cubic meters. What's the average cost for that? Do you have that information?
Through the chair to the councillor. I don't have that. I didn't look at individual projects within municipalities. I reviewed their fees and charges bylaws to see what they did charge. Some municipalities had a range like we have that decreased with a larger amount volumes of fill. So that's sort of how they handled that difference. I have to say that a couple municipalities actually increased their fees with larger fill sites. I'm not quite sure what that, you know, why they did that. But I just really looked at, what we did was we looked at sort of like municipalities that had fees structured similar to ours, where they had a sort of a range in fees. And that's where we got that there, there are some municipalities that for some reason charge much higher fees and then others that charge very little fees. Often that's in municipalities that are very urban in their area. They don't have a lot of space for fill to happen. So they don't have a need to, to put that much oversight into a project like that. They would never have a property that needs that much fill. So their fees, you know, they've, they've just got minimal fees involved with that. But for municipalities like ours with a large rural area base and opportunities for, you know, fill projects like this, it's often the case where there's that range in price. And as, you know, the project gets bigger, there's some consideration given. It's important to note that, like I mentioned, this is not a fee on return of effort from staff to manage this project. This is for our reserve fund. You know, we have had some problems with some fill sites over the years and we want to just make sure that we build up this reserve fund that can deal with issues that come forth from site alteration. We regularly take a look at that fee and that fund to make sure that, you know, obviously that we're not taking too much money and that, but we, we are just really starting out with that fee. This is our first year for it and we'd like to get that built up a little bit to, to have a little cushion for these kinds of things.
And I appreciate that completely and I agree with it. I just, I don't like, much with the mayor's comment, I don't want this to become cost prohibitive for the rehab of a lot of these, you know, former gravel pits, for instance. So just kind of back to my other question, and I know that you don't have the average for those commercial ones, but, and you probably don't have this one either, but the statistician in me is asking, you know, this is probably the mean. Do you have the median? Because that would give us an indication whether or not it's skewed more to the smaller infill projects versus those larger commercial ones.
Good question. I did sort of start, I did do get some of that information together when, when I was doing the calculation for the bylaw update. I don't have that right in front of me. I know that when I looked at sort of the average and the mean average, they were very, very similar. It didn't skew. And I looked at, I took off, like there's one municipality I can think of that charges $5 per cubic meter across part. I took that out and then I took, you know, a 10 cent one out just to sort of get an average of those middle. And it didn't really make much difference, just with the, the scope of the municipalities that I checked.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? No, I have one before we move on. Are these large moneymakers for commercial fill sites? Are they making a huge profit off of this or are they just breaking even?
To the, to the chair, I'm sure Matt can answer that a little better for you with his experience. In my experience, they can be money generators for both the contractor and the property owner. They're not always. Sometimes they're not. It really depends. You know, the, the, the big cost in fill projects is the trucking and how far they have to bring the soil into the site. So if you can imagine if it's coming from, you know, 100 kilometers away, that's going to cost a lot more for them than if they can get the soil, you know, from a few blocks away. So also how they need to get the soil, if they need to remove it from the site, if it's already been stripped and prepared or if they have to be the ones to remove that soil, that makes a difference. Testing involved, I mean, there are, there are costs to moving soil in, in the province now. They have to register on the provincial soil site and that has costs associated with that. So it's not the moneymaker it used to be, I believe, and Matt can, and think about that. But I think there is still, it still can be considered a business, if you will, to bring soil into a property. And we're, our job is just to make sure that it's soil that's needed for the property and not, you know, just to generate an income.
Thank you. Well, then we'll call up our speaker. We'll call on our delegate Mac Franzizi of Steadman Evans. Hopefully I pronounced your name properly, but.
Close. Lots of people have said Franzizi my whole life.
Franziz.
Good evening. Thanks Lori. Yeah, I just wanted to say a few words and I think a lot of the questions lead into what I wanted to talk about today. So my name is Matt Franziz, Vice President, Steadman Evans Limited. We are one of the largest, most respected civil construction companies in Southern Ontario. We're in our 73rd year of, of business. We employ 350 people year-round in construction-related activities, asphalt paving, concrete, winter maintenance. We don't do tar and chip, thankfully. That was a big topic tonight. But yeah, we, we make our decisions based on being in business for another 70 years. We're not, we are not a fly-by-night company who's looking to make a buck on, on filling holes. Really, the first point I want to make about this is we, we are willing to, I've had lots of good dialogue with Lori. We've had lots of conversations and, you know, getting up to, started with getting up to speed on what this bylaw really meant, understanding it. We, we have a lot of experience in the, the current soil regulations, filling different sites. We filled the latest phase of the Birdland subdivision. That was all about the us in that same type of, this exact same type of scenario. That's residential, so there was no fees attached, being the only difference. Everything else was the same. We tracked the soils, all tested. It all met the, the requirements of regulation. So the main point I want to make before I get into this is we're willing to follow every rule set out in the bylaw. We're just asking that the fees be reduced because at this point they are cost prohibitive. It just doesn't make sense to pay $250,000 to the township to do this. It is, our business is not soil. We, we do this soil stuff out of necessity. One quick note, the updated survey was really when we brought this forward the first time. There was a whole bunch of snow on the ground. We couldn't get a good survey of it. So we've since flown the property with our drone, did a comprehensive survey and it's a lot closer to 200,000 than it's 250. That's the reason for the change. Yeah, and soil, excess soil is, is just a part of our business. We're, we're not in the soil business to make money. That's not where, where we focus our efforts. Our efforts are in road building and if you're in road building, you generate excess material. Very rarely do you get, and Jared can probably attest to this, very rarely do you build a new road or reconstruct a road and balance the soil on the site. Almost always, probably 95% of the time, there's excess soil and it has to be dealt with in a responsible manner. Just a few rebuttals to, to some of the things in, in the staff report. Of the 25 municipalities analyzed, I think Lori said it, only 12 had fees. One thing I wanted to say is it's really difficult to compare municipalities within striking distance of the GTA. I would not call Kitchener Waterloo anything comparable to a municipality within trucking distance of the Greater Toronto Area. For example, Chicopee is taking 700,000 cubic meters of fill over the next several years. So almost everybody in urban Kitchener Waterloo, they can take it there. They don't have to truck it to Woolwich. It's really cost prohibitive. Most of the money in, in excess soil is in trucking, as Lori stated. So I don't, I don't think that's a fair comparison to, to generate those. I would argue that a lot of those municipalities within Toronto are people, are municipalities who've had trouble with illegal dumping. I can tell you the folks that are in hot water for illegal dumping, they don't come to council and ask to pay $110,000. They, they just dump and then they try to fight and get away with it through other means. That's where I think this, this request is very different. The financial benefit, Councillor Bryant, to answer your question is, the way we do it, it's not a big money generator for us. Like I said, it's a necessity. We, we generate excess soil. We have to find a way to get rid of it in a responsible manner. In this particular instance, we're trying to help a property owner return an old gravel pit that no longer has a license. We're trying to fill it up to the grade of the rest of its surrounding agriculture so he can farm it. That's really what this project is about. Steadman Evans in particular, we generate somewhere between 30,000 and 60,000 cubic meters of excess soil per year, just doing our regular business and we have to find ways to, to get rid of it. You know, in the report, it indicated that the township regularly pays $40 a cubic meter for excess soil. I would argue that you do not pay $40 for excess soil. You pay, the $40 would include your, your loading, your hauling, your trucking. Typically a tipping fee for excess soil. So if we didn't operate our own sites, we would carry $5 a, a per cubic meter in our, in our bid to go pay another site $50 a load to get rid of the soil. And it costs close to $50 a load to get, to knock the soil down to a flat area, to compact it, to get it in a manner so that it can be farmed. You know, this, this site is maybe six, eight meters deep. If we didn't compact this in one foot or two foot lifts, you wouldn't be able to farm this for 30 years. This has to be compacted in a way that it can be farmed in a short time after it's full. The township doesn't need to test the soil. All of this is covered under the Ontario Regulation 40619. It's regulated by the province. This site being over 10,000 cubic meters, it, it has to be registered with the Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks, the MECP. So we actually register it. Connor from Excess Soil being our qualified person with the site, which is required by the province. He registers the site on behalf of the property owner. That's on the ministry's website. That's basically sending them an email to say we're hauling and fill. Come visit us anytime. That's really what that is. You, you can't hide from, from those folks. And, and in our experience in managing large-scale sites, they do come visit. They pop in, they ask what you're doing, they ask for your, your hauling records, every single load is tracked. And they, they come and check up on you to make sure you're doing things right. Knock on wood, we've never had any issues with, with that. They've, they've come and looked around and they've been satisfied with what they found. The financial impact, while, while I think that is real and it's important to have in your bylaw, this particular site is not using, we're not using Cedar Spring Road. There's an access, already an approved access off the region road. We will not be doing any trucking on the, the township road. So there'll be no need to fix the road or damage to the road or any of those things. We'll have a controlled access gate at, at the region road, access in and out of the site. It'll be locked every night. There'll be no access in the site when we're not there. When we are there and we're operating, we'll have a person in, in the site. They track every load. It's on, it's on an app, either an iPad or a smartphone, comes in, it's got the hauler on it, it's got the generator of it. If it's not somebody that we pre-approved to bring soil, the load gets turned around and sent away. We, we don't accept soil unless it's on our approved list. And it's a private property. I'm not sure where any municipality in Ontario has ever had to go mitigate an issue on private property. There's the, the case down in North Dumfries where that was a commercial fill site, illegal commercial fill site. They built a ski hill. They never collected $1 of fees from, from the township down there. And they beat up all the roads and all those things. That's an example of an illegal commercial fill site. And I want, I will note that the, the use of commercial fill site, that's just kind of language in your bylaw. This is, what we're operating is not a commercial fill site. We're not a Green for Life or one of these companies who has fill sites for, this, like I said, this is out of necessity. And the other thing that I'd like to note is if, if this site were still a licensed aggregate site through the Ministry of Natural Resources, there would be a rehab plan and there would be zero fees given to the township. You, you may have the same issues of trucking and all of these things. You, you may have the same issues of trucking and all of these things. The township would be able to collect zero dollars because the M and R controls that, um, federally and, and, uh, it, it gets controlled through that. Uh, this property owner only wishes to return this to farmable agriculture. Uh, so in conclusion, um, in our opinion, that, that this staff report implies a level of fear around, um, fill sites and the danger of bad actors, I would say. And maybe a little bit of lack of knowledge about, you know, this being, Lori has told me this being the first large-scale fill site within the township, I understand the apprehension. Uh, I was only coming tonight to explain a little bit about how we operate, who we are. We are good corporate citizens and, and, uh, we intend to do the right thing. Um, and we've got a history of, you know, we could provide references, whatever you need, of delivering clean fill. We did, we did the, uh, Birdland subdivision. We did, um, Wallenstein Feed, where, where they're currently building their, their massive twin expansion plant. Um, so we've got a good track record. Uh, and the, the fee schedule, really my whole, my whole argument here is that it, it contemplates a fee reduction from zero to twenty-five hundred, twenty-five hundred to five thousand, so on and so forth to ten thousand, but there's no fee reduction contemplated from ten thousand to infinity. And really, I don't, I don't think that, uh, the reserve shun, the reserve fund should be funded off the back of one good company, the first one to show up to the table. Um, to, and really what you want the reserve fund for is to deal with bad actors, right? So I, I'm not sure how, I understand the issue with it, but I'm not sure how you should be able to fund that off the backs of, of good people who want to do the right thing. Um, my request is respectfully, uh, requested council direct staff to provide a, or at least look into a sliding scale, fee scale, beyond the ten thousand me, uh, cubic meters, it reduces the fees to at least fifty cents per cubic meter. Lori's math was spot on, I had the same number, we're willing to pay a hundred and ten thousand dollars in fees, um, for this site, uh, to operate. That's all I have, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Councillor, do we have any questions for the delegate? None? Thank you, Matt, no questions.
Wow, thank you.
Okay, councillor, for you, you have a recommendation. Uh, do I have a mover for that recommendation? Questions or, no, okay, that's, uh, if I can get your name right, we'll be doing this.
Councillor Caddo.
Councillor Caddo.
Uh, I just had a question for, uh, Lori, if I may. So through you, um, Chair to Lori, when we're talking about these large-scale, um, fills, would you say that the majority of them would be rehabs of old gravel pits? I'm trying to get a sense of that because, I mean, the last thing I want to do is put something in place that's cost prohibitive to rehab an old gravel pit to farmable land. So I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, moving forward, is it going to be a lot of gravel pits that are requiring this level?
Yes, through the Chair to the councillor, um, yeah, that is a good question. There are quite a few of them that are these legacy, I'll call them legacy, uh, gravel pits. Um, they either were licensed and then, um, their license, um, they, they, they lapsed their license or they, they, they closed out their license. Or some of them were never really licensed pits, they were just areas that they knew gravel pockets were in and they would use them for that purpose. And then the end result, of course, as you said, is this hole in the, the ground. Um, so I would say in the province, um, there, that is, um, a portion of fill sites are, old gravel pits being filled in. Um, licensed gravel pits are treated a little differently because they're rehabilitated nowadays as they are, as the gravel is extracted, the, the rehabilitation soil is brought in. So, uh, it's done at the same time. But the older, uh, style licensed pits like this one weren't done in that fashion. So I know what, that was one of the things Matt mentioned, that if this were a, um, gravel pit, it would be exempt. Not necessarily because there are regulations around how that gets rehabilitated, and I know that the province, I know one pit that did try to do that, just bring in a, a bunch of soil after the fact, and the province ha- made them, uh, redo their rehabilitation plan. And to my knowledge now, it's not even, uh, operating yet. But, um, it, it, but if it's done as part of a, a gravel pit, yeah, the, the, our fee is, is we, it doesn't apply, our bylaw doesn't apply. Uh, same with if it is done as development, Matt mentioned, uh, the Birdland development, um, the, the site alteration bylaw doesn't apply if the work is done after the development is registered. So that is just, uh, part of the planning act, we can't, um, issue a permit, um, for that. Yeah, I, I think there's different reasons, I know of some, I, I have, we, although this is our first large-scale fill, um, project, um, I've been involved with a few in my previous, um, places of work. And, uh, one of those was a, was just a property that they wanted to raise the grade of the land up. And they, they got, had an opportunity to get some fill in to do that. It wasn't, there wasn't a, a hole on the property, they just wanted that agricultural property to be har- higher. And another one I was involved with was a, an aerodrome site, so a, an airport, a little local airport that they, uh, imported a bunch of soil into that as well. Um, but yes, quite often, and there are some government programs that deal with legacy, agriculture pits and rehabilitating those. So I always, uh, sort of encourage applicants that are dealing with properties like that to look at those, uh, programs that are offered to see if there's any assistance that can be given. But, um, lately I haven't had anybody, any applications come in through any of those programs.
Thank you. Thank you, so Mayor Shaun, you were moving that one? Is that correct or?
Uh, I was going to move it with, um, the recommendation that the, the applicant had provided with fifty cents per cubic meter, for the over ten, ten thousand cubic meters.
Do we have a seconder for that motion? Councillor Burgess? Do you have a question or?
More of a, a comment. Um, would you be willing to put that in place for the rehabilitation of gravel pits only? I'm just trying to be mindful of the ski hills, for instance, that they're going to be building.
Yeah, I, I would say it's just for this application and maybe, um, at the end of it, we can evaluate, we can take a look at, uh, how it went, given this is our, our really first foray into something like that. But yes, it would be only for this application, I'm not suggesting we change our fees. This would be a, just this one.
Just a one time. Okay, and you're okay with that, Evan, as a seconder? Okay, then I'm going to put the question out there, all in favor? And that would be carried. Okay. Then we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. DS ten twenty-two-five Almyra and Saint Jacobs staging and development plan. We will ask Director of Development Services Deanne Fries and Manager of Planning Victor Labresh and Manager of Special Planning Projects John Scarphone to present the staff application.
Can you share the presentation again? Somebody? Okay, thanks, Chair. All right, so I'll go through this, um, as quickly as I can, since I know it's late. You want to just start the slideshow? Can you start the slideshow? Oh, yeah, you're doing all right, okay. Um, so the township has a longstanding philosophy for staging. Um, this includes policies for consistent and manageable growth on an annual basis. The reason for this staging philosophy is to avoid pressures, to expand settlement areas unnecessarily, ensure that adequate services and infrastructure are in place for new development, uh, budget and plan for, uh, infrastructure and soft services that new development, uh, minimize the impacts of the development. And, uh, this philosophy, this philosophy is supported by the provincial planning statement, the PPS. Next slide, please. So the provincial planning statement, which, uh, was updated in twenty-two-four, um, does focus on, on growth within settlement areas, which efficiently uses land uses, resources and infrastructure, and also supports that transportation and transit. Uh, the PPS does note that planning authorities should establish and implement phasing policies to ensure that orderly develop, uh, development, um, and make sure that that development is aligned with infrastructure and facilities. Next slide, please. The, uh, provincial planning statement, previously called the provincial policy statement, was updated in twenty-two-four and now, uh, individuals can privately, privately initiate, uh, settlement area boundary expansion, subject to very specific criteria. So this is important in the case of Saint Jacobs and Almyra because this will allow development to proceed in advance of the township official plan, um, and, uh, expand that area out to the settlement area boundary that was established through the regional official plan. Next slide, yes. So just to clarify what exactly settlement area is, it is the developable area that the township has that's between the built boundary and the settlement area boundary. So it includes the built-up area, um, that would include all buildings that are already in place, um, with, and we have minimum targets for that area of, for intensification and infill that would not be part of our staging policies. And examples of that would be, uh, such as, uh, Trinity Church, that's going to be redeveloping, and, uh, the property across the street from our administration building here at, uh, twenty-two Arthur. Um, between the built-up area and the settlement area boundary is the greenfield area, and this is the area that we are planning for that staged phased growth. So, um, currently we have minimum density targets, uh, of forty-five units per hectare in Saint Jacobs and fifty-five units per hectare in Almyra. And these will be under review in our new official plan. Uh, provincial's targets, or these targets do come from provincial policy and get implemented in our, uh, planning official plan. Next slide, please. So as councillor is aware, the, uh, province did expand our settlement areas in our three major settlement areas of Saint Jacobs, Almyra and, um, Bresla. So the township did support this at the time, um, but it was very, uh, conditional support based on only with staged phased policies for the long-term growth of these areas. Uh, it's important to note that, um, not all lands within the settlement area boundary will be recommended to be developed, uh, between the planning, within the planning horizon to twenty-fifty-one. Um, particularly, uh, one to note is the Bresla area, which added, uh, almost two thousand hectares and quadrup- quadrupled the size of Bresla. Um, Almyra added two hundred and forty-one hectares and Saint Jacobs forty-one hectares. So these are shown in the, the outlined red line on these maps for us, as well as you can see them. The green is the original settlement area boundary. So today we'll, we will only be dealing with Almyra and Saint Jacobs, Bresla staging and development plan will be coming forward at a later date. Next slide, please. The township strategic plan that was done in twenty-two-four also supports the staging philosophy. It's aligned with our official plan policies. Um, specifically, the quote from the strategic plan notes that we will, uh, carefully navigate the planning and development of our communities through phased and managed growth that supports environmental and agricultural sustainability as well as community well-being. Next slide, please. Uh, the township official plan allows the implementation of this staging philosophy. Uh, the policies were first approved in the nineteen-nineties for Almyra and Saint Jacobs and later applied to Bresla. Uh, Bresla staging policies were challenged at the Ontario Municipal Board back in two thousand seventeen, now referred to as the, um, Ontario Land Tribunal, and they were upheld. So that's important to consider that, uh, we did get that provincial support at that time from the, um, Ontario Municipal Board. Um, policy highlights that are included in our official plan include providing overall population distribution to respective settlements, uh, providing annual growth rate targets for Almyra, Saint Jacobs and Bresla, as I mentioned previously, providing that logical extension of services and required infrastructure to service the new developments, and also addressing other planning priorities. So, uh, typically the township would provide equal distribution of allocation to all developments, unless there's specific planning priorities that are addressed by, and that, that would justify, um, a different allocation or bringing on certain lands sooner. And there's just some examples there of what those other priorities would be, if they were providing some community infrastructure, a community facility such as a recreation facility, a fire hall, a library. Uh, they could also have a significant amount of affordable housing or sustainable green-designed buildings. Um, or they could also, um, align with the, the timing of and funding of infrastructure projects that we have scheduled. Uh, moving on. So there's some key points for the implementation of the official plan policies. Um, for one, they're for residential growth only, we don't stage, uh, non-residential growth. Uh, they're based on a population, um, uh, people per units for, uh, which is dependent on different housing types, we use an average rate of two-point-seven-five. Um, single detached dwellings have a higher people-per-unit rate, apartments have lower, but we even use an average of seven, uh, two-point-seven-five. Uh, policies allow for development to register a three-year supply of annual allocation plus any unused allocation from previous years. Uh, multiple residential housing blocks that provide apartment units are exempt from counting in that three-year supply. This is used as an incentive to, um, encourage forms of housing that we need in the township. And our practice, as I mentioned previously, is to equally distribute future allocations to provide for a variety of housing types and markets, uh, or end products that can come to the market. Uh, so the township is responsible for preparing the staging of development plan to en- uh, ensure that sequential orderly development. And council is responsible for endorsing that staging of development plan to set out that framework for allocation distribution. Um, as we receive new development applications and, and, uh, they proceed to an actual draft approved stage, then we can adjust the allocation based on actual numbers. So, um, a lot of times developments will come forward with a range of, um, housing units and we evaluate based on the high end of the range to ensure that we're not overallocating. And then as, um, council draft approves and actually commits allocation to those developments, we adjust the numbers accordingly. Um, staging of development plans can also be adjusted periodically with, um, other information such as infrastructure upgrades, uh, wastewater capacity, um, analysis that would be based on actual flows. And, uh, we will note to council that, uh, typically what we've seen for, in wastewater monitoring annually is that, uh, trends usually result in greater residual capacity due to in, uh, increased water efficiency. Moving on. So, uh, it's important to have balanced growth, I won't go through these individually, but there's a, a lot of good reasons why balanced growth makes sense over faster growth or slower growth. Um, one of the major considerations is that it's most financial, uh, financially responsible to grow in a balanced way, uh, where your infrastructure and your community services, um, can align with the growth. Moving on. And then, uh, there's also a lot of reasons why, uh, we do want to grow. So it's not just a, a financial analysis based on, um, the, the fact that growth doesn't necessar- or residential growth doesn't necessarily pay for itself, but there's also other benefits to growth within a township, um, including providing that housing that's needed to accommodate existing and future residents, expanding community services and facilities, um, uh, in incentivizing, uh, employment and non-residential development to come to the township, which do contribute to our tax revenue and attracting other commercial amenities to our area. And there's, uh, others on the list as well, but I won't go through them in detail. And now moving on to the specifics of what we're talking about tonight, uh, we're proposing a staging of development plan for Almyra and Saint Jacobs. Um, the current growth rate that has been established and has historically been established in, um, Almyra and Saint Jacobs is three percent. So we are proposing to continue with that three percent and not, um, uh, grow beyond that. It's the three percent is what we're proposing today. Unit counts for, uh, what we're looking at today are based on that two-point-seven-five people per unit. So again, that is an average. Um, it's, uh, it does fluctuate and with actuals, we can, we can adjust that in, uh, future adjustments to our staging of development. Um, and as I mentioned before, the staging of development today is only for Almyra and Saint Jacobs, Bresla. Bresla staging and development will come at a separate time. Creates a lot more information, public consultations, a lot larger area, a lot more properties to consider. So for Almyra, the annual population growth would be 366 people. And for St. Jacobs, it would be 64 people based on that 3% growth. A portion of that would be accommodated through the built boundary, and the other portion would be accommodated through the greenfield area, as you can see with the chart in front of you. And that equates to 133 units per year for Almyra and 23 units per year for St. Jacobs. And as I mentioned before, we would be considering an equal distribution of those units per year to the developments that are that do have potential to to develop within the next within the planning horizon. Next slide. So what we'll do is we'll go actually right to the to the map, and then I'll explain as we see it there. So phase one for this is Almyra. So phase one is the currently allocated area. So they were the areas that were already allocated capacity through the previous staging of development plan. This includes 117 units in for Hawkeridge Homes, and that is actually considered as infilling and intensification and not greenfield development. So that counts towards that 20% that I had mentioned earlier. Other allocated areas include Lunar Group, phases one to eight, and these are the remaining phases. They're included in this in our allocation due to the logical extension of services and to balance out the development around the Almyra downtown core. And that would be built out by or the capacity would be built out by 2026. Also, in that current allocated area is Southwood Four, policy areas 1A1 and 1A2. And again, this is due to the logical extension of services, road connection to Whippoorwill, and installing a central stormwater management facility and conveyance of woodlots and trails. So there's a few priorities that they're meeting there. The next phase of development, which would occur or which would be allocated between 2021 and 2038, would include the Activa Plan. That's Area 10 on the map in front of you. They were included because of the wastewater capacity that's available to service those lands. And again, that proximity to balance out the development around the core area, so that not all development is is to the south end of Almyra, but we have development in other areas of Almyra, and also the ability to provide some additional housing types and products. The other area that's included in Phase Two is the Schlegel Urban Development, Area 1A2. And again, this is due to that logical extension of services and that practice to equally distribute the future allocation to multiple developments so that we can again have a variety of housing types and products. Phase Three would include Area 11 on the map, the Eldell Policy Area. Again, logical extension of servicing and infrastructure. And then the remaining phases of Lunar, Phases Nine and 10. But that would be not scheduled until about 2037 and on. Moving on to the St. Jacobs map. I'll quickly run through this, and then we can open for any questions or discussion. The St. Jacobs allocation would include Phase One, which would be Area Three, and that's the currently allocated plan of subdivision Valley View Heights, and that's at the at the south end of St. Jacobs. The remaining developments include two areas, Area Four and Area Five, which could be developed between 2021 until about 2039, when we reach some wastewater constraints at that time. So for Area Four, that's the what we're referring to as the Polacorp lands, and they're also still here, yes. So these were added as a added to the settlement area through the provincial expansion. The plan does include a condominium, which we've already discussed earlier today, which does consist of a variety of housing types. Because of the variety of housing types and the density of that development, it does have a higher priority on our what we would usually consider. So we do consider this an important development because of the density. And I know there was some concerns on the density. Right now, we are looking at a total of 151 units to be built out by 2033. We have the first submission of the plan that you've heard today, and you've heard some concerns about density. These numbers can change. They can change as they go through the planning process. Again, when you're approving a staging of development plan, you're looking at approving a framework, but not necessarily the down to the little detail specifics, because numbers do change. And again, we're evaluating it based on the upper end of any unit counts. The other area, Area Five, is the Schlegel Urban Developments. They were also added through the provincial expansion to the settlement area for the majority of their site. And they include that subdivision on the north side of Hawksville Road, which would consist of low density residential, a large woodlot. And this one also becomes a priority priority to the township because it will allow the development of people care residential care facility. So again, both of these sites do have a higher priority for consideration by council and by the township for allocation. They have a total of 966 people. Their build out would again go to 2039 when we run into issues with wastewater capacity being depleted. And then when we do our annual reviews of our wastewater and we get final numbers for developments, then potentially additional allocation can be provided. So I hope I didn't talk too fast there, but there you go.
So you're ready for questions?
Yep, Victor and I are here for questions. So John's not, but hopefully we can answer any questions that you might have.
Council, do we have any questions of staff? We'll start with Nathan, and then we'll go over to Eric.
Thanks, Jared. Through you to Deanne. We we have this prescribed rate of growth, 64 in St. Jacobs, 366 in Almyra. Are we hitting those benchmarks? I know you said we're kind of estimating at the high range, so I'm under the assumption that we're not anywhere close to those numbers, correct?
No, we are seeing an annual growth rate of 3% in both Almyra and St. Jacobs. So if we don't hit those numbers because of market conditions or developments reducing the numbers that they're proposing in their developments, then we would allocate it to other developments.
Okay. Okay.
So this is our historical rate growth rate that we've seen because of our limited staging and growth. So we would actually see a lot more if we didn't limit.
So I'm just thinking about like the lunar development stages one through eight that you're saying are going to be built out by 2026. I mean, I live in that development. That's not happening.
Yeah, that's okay. So through you, Madam Chair. So that's a good point. So because we're giving allocation, it does. The developers do have the opportunity to accumulate that development until it's feasible for them to go ahead with the development. So they can sit on allocation. We do have the ability now through recent provincial legislation to pull back allocations. But in in this case, and as is explained in the report, that's not a situation where we want to see the capacity pulled back because we do have some community benefits for that site as well. And we do expect that it will be going ahead as well. So even if we give these allocation, there can be years where depending on market conditions that that particular year doesn't build out the number of units that are allocated for that year. Sometimes they accumulate them over years so that they can build out at a at one time.
The last question is, how does that impact the staging process if we're planning for a certain amount of builds over the course of the years? Are we going to run in? Or is there a risk that we run into a situation where we have a massive building frenzy? And then we have years of huge lull?
Through you, Madam Chair. So potentially, yes, you could have a building frenzy in one year and then a lull in the other year. And that's why you see the years that we have the actuals for prior to the 2025, and they do fluctuate because they depend on what was built that year. And a lot of the times, it does result in that kind of that stored up capacity so that they can build a number of units at once.
Thank you.
Counselor Schwinn?
Thanks, and Counselor could answer one of my questions for me, but a couple others. We heard today density is always a contentious issue. Wondering, are the targets we have set down for the province, are they township targets, are settlement area targets, or are they subdivision targets?
They through you, Madam Chair. So they are settlement area targets. So they would be for any development that comes in the area. We would try to ensure that we are meeting those minimum targets. The 45 units per hectare is actually a very low target that through our official plan review, we expect that the province is probably going to try to get us to go a little higher for that or is going to force us to go higher for that. Because for an urban area, it's a little bit on the lower side. If you consider an urban area development in one of the larger cities like in Kitchener, Waterloo, Cambridge, they're typically looking at a target of around 65 units per hectare. So that's a lot more stacked townhouses, larger kind of townhouse development, smaller lots, less singles, things like that, so.
Okay. And noting on that, province is saying these are your targets. We're making our official plans and boundaries, et cetera. What flexibility is built in? Is it here's a number, use it? Is this council supposed to adapt for geography and settlement areas and local nuances? And if we do or we don't, who's the objecting body?
Through you, Madam Chair. So yeah, because it is a settlement wide target, there can be situations where certain developments don't meet those targets. But then other developments could come in above target. I would say that if we're in a position where a developer can meet the target, but council is not supporting that, they would have the ability to appeal to the Ontario Land Tribunal. We are required to follow that provincial policy and to look at the policies that are in place, which is to encourage those higher density residential developments. So if we're not meeting the provincial targets, it would be very hard to defend at an Ontario Municipal Board here, Ontario Land Tribunal hearings, right?
If the developer was on side and township's on side, there's no way left to disagree?
Yep. Short answer.
Counsel, do we have any other questions? Nope, seeing none. Thank you, Deanne. Now we will move on. We have two delegations for this topic tonight. And first, we will call on Sheena Campbell of People Care Communities. Welcome, Sheena. You can begin when you're ready.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Council, Mayor Shantz. Thank you very much for inviting me to speak with you this evening. My name's Sheena Campbell, and as mentioned, I am from People Care Communities. It has been my pleasure to speak with you in past about our project that we're hoping to bring forward and would like to share a little bit about today's topic of conversation and the impact that it potentially would have on our on our project. So just as a refresher about People Care, we're a third generation, family owned, leading developer and operator of senior living and focused on long term care and partnering with municipalities across Ontario to bring more long term care to those communities. Our vision is to change the world of senior living, and we do that by designing vibrant care communities where people are supported to live and to work with purpose and vitality. And it wouldn't be possible without strong community partnerships. So again, thank you for for your partnership with us and with trying to bring some of these wonderful community benefits to your communities. So People Care is very eager to build a 160 bed long term care home to serve St. Jacobs and the surrounding areas. However, our project is dependent on the Schlegel Development, as was noted in Area Five, which will provide our site, which is around 2.5 acres at the top end of the Cavalry United Church lands. So the Schlegel Development will be providing our site with access and essential servicing. Our understanding is that the 50 50 servicing split that's proposed by township staff doesn't reflect or address the size and density of the Schlegel site and may delay the development. So we heard a talk about that and to say that we do support proportional allocation to help all the partners move forward together. Our development addresses a real and growing need for long term care in your community. As mentioned in the letter that was shared with you, we took a look at some of the long term care homes within a six kilometer area and surrounding area of St. Jacobs, and there are 1,100 people approximately on that waitlist. And if you extend that to approximately nine kilometers, that waitlist more than doubles to approximately 2,400 people. Our long term care home will provide care and supports for so many of these seniors and their families whose care needs can no longer be met in any other way. We'll also have some other meaningful benefits that we'll be bringing to the community in terms of creating jobs, supporting the local economy, all as part of this vibrant proposed neighborhood within your community where all people can, people of all ages will be able to live and work and connect. We have worked closely with Schlegel and the township to make this shared vision a reality. It's been it's been a while in coming. And so we're certainly super excited to bring this much needed long term care home to this community with your continued support. Without timely servicing, we simply can't move ahead. We really urge council to support proportional allocation to allow this important project to continue. And I'd like to thank you again for your time and consideration, your leadership on this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Council. Do we have any questions for the delegate, Mayor Shantz?
Thank you. Thank you for coming in, Sheena. Just wonder, we've been talking for, I don't know how many years. I've for quite some time. And I know you've got some funding strengths as well. Can you tell me what you're what you're hoping in terms of timing for the build?
Absolutely. So you're right. We've been talking about this for a long time. I believe it was in 2021 that we were at the Community Health Centre and were awarded the 160 bed allocation for the area. Ideally, we would be looking to break ground in 2026. And so it takes typically 18 to 24 months to build a home of this size.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions for the delegate? No, seeing none. Thank you, Sheena.
Thank you all for your time. Good night.
Our final delegate for the evening is Kristin Barrisdale of GSP Group. Welcome. You may begin when you're ready.
Hello again. I'm I registered to speak as a delegation. I'm going to turn it over actually to Von Bender from Schlegel Developments, who is going to speak to our requests. I believe it was circulated to staff, and he'll walk you through the servicing request we're making.
Thanks, Kristin. And I'll just say as well, I'm joined not only by Kristin, but by Matt and Amia, our engineer from Walter Fady, by a colleague, Alex Robinson, planning with Schlegel. Good evening, Chair Bryant and members of committee and council. I'm going to move kind of quickly through the first several pages and kind of get to the gist of our our request to the to the committee this evening. But I'll just touch on the on the first page. Yes, we have been working at this this land and this process for a number of years. You've you've seen us before, council here during the ROPA six process. We stepped into ownership of the Gillis Free D lands, which were here for pre consultation with township staff in 2021, about the time that the People Care project was was in its genesis. We have been working collaboratively with People Care to come up with a schedule and an approach for servicing and stormwater management and so on that meets their timing needs. And of course, meets needs that we were hoping for as well for our own lands. It's important to note the Schlegel and People Care site can connect to existing municipal infrastructure by gravity on Northside Drive, which is often recognized as the most cost effective and efficient use of existing municipal investment. We're not here tonight to look for additional, you know, abilities to bring in additional population to St. Jacobs. We have made our complete application on May 7th for our development. And that is shown on one of the following slides. But there will be a forthcoming public meeting regarding that. And and we'd be very much looking forward to to talking about, you know, the design of our complete community, our master planning approach and all of that. We've also had the benefit of hearing neighbor concerns in the St. Jacobs community tonight as relate to the Polacorp application. And we will certainly be digesting that as well as we bring forward with staff, you know, a final plan for the Schlegel Development. Maybe I will, I wanted to mention as well, we've had very constructive discussions with township staff along the way, with Victor Labrush, with Deanne Fries, with Stephen Dykstra, with predecessors. And although we're here, you know, a bit at odds with what the staff recommendation is, we're looking for refinement to that. I don't want to diminish the the good work that we've been able to do with the township staff. And we know there's a lot of work ahead of us, and we look forward to collaborating in that. So on Slide Two, I've really laid out what we see as a a resolution to the challenge that we're at. And that is, you know, to refine the staff recommendation to either allocate the to either allocate the per-person capacity on a net area basis. You know, the Schlegel site is more than three times the site, the land area of the Polacorp site. An alternative to that would be to allocate additional sixteen persons, person units of capacity to the Schlegel land in each of the years 2020 through 2027, assuming we would get started in, you know, twenty-five, twenty-six, that timeline that Sheena mentioned. Either of those approaches would equate to about one-hundred-and-twenty-five persons or forty-five homes if you look at that measurement of two-point-seven-five per home as an average. Failing, you know, agreement to these requested revisions, what we're asking for then is a deferral to allow for additional dialogue and discussion to take place with staff and, and with council members as well. I'll skip over slide three. It's really about our forthcoming application. But we do feel very proud about the type of development we could bring to St. Jacobs and a development that is in keeping with the existing neighborhood, I'll say. So this is just the slide floor, four is showing the net developable area, the difference between Schlegel and Polacorp. Next slide is showing our draft plan, which has just come in on May seventh, along with our staging plan that was submitted with that, showing, you know, a large stage-one area to reflect the large upfront costs that come with the first stage of any project. Slide six is the recommendation that's in your staff report regarding the allocation of person capacity in St. Jacobs. Slide seven is what that looks like on a plan for our first stage. So in the top right corner, you can see the staging plan that is in our application package. Slide eight is what that plan would look like, the yellow area, if capacity were allocated between Schlegel and Polacorp on a area basis. Side, slide nine is just showing those side by side. Slide ten is, you know, I wanted to, to acknowledge this. This is a staging plan which we had been using in much earlier discussions with staff and leadership here at the township. And our stage-one area in this submission, these informal discussions, was a little bit smaller than what is in our submitted package. But that reflects some of the extra costs we have recognized we're facing. I will just wrap up. The next slide, number eleven, shows how very similar the capacity would look, you know, to what we were hoping for, I'll say, a number of years ago, to if it were allocated on a proportional basis or if the additional capacity was given to us in the earlier years that we've suggested. And just if I may, for another minute, to add some context, slide twelve is our development in Almyra. This draft plan application has not come in yet. It'll be coming in within the next two to three weeks. But the capacity that's in the staff report, this is what it looks like in our first stage of the Almyra-Schlegel lands. And on slide fourteen, we demonstrate that when you take into account the seven persons of capacity that is being given to Activa in advance, the capacity in Almyra between the Activa lands and the Schlegel lands is actually divvied up on a pretty much a per-hectare basis. So we think there's a level of sort of fairness there. There's a level of precedent, and it's a necessary requirement for us to get our site going, but also get the People Care site moving. Thanks. I apologize for going over time.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have any questions of this delegate? Mayor Shantz?
Well, I had a question, but I think you really did answer it. So in order to be viable for you to get the servicing that's needed in order for People Care to go ahead essentially, you need the proportional development. And/or, not and/or, but or the sixteen additional units that you listed.
That, that is what we feel strongly, if I may. The, you know, we have, you know, experience of building master-planned communities mostly in Kitchener, but we are expanding to some other township areas in, in the region of Waterloo as well. And we generally know that, you know, you need to be in that one-hundred-and-twenty-five, one-hundred-and-fifty range for a first phase, for it to be viable, to generate the pre-sales of lots and to build that upfront infrastructure and secure it with financing to make the project, you know, get off the ground. We need to, to get bank financing and move it forward. That doesn't mean that all, you know, one-hundred-and-fifty homes get built all at one time. It depends how many builders you're working with. It depends on the housing market and all of that. But if we would think about selling lots to six or seven local builders, I'm sure they'd be happy to take twenty or twenty-five lots each and, you know, and build through those at a measured pace, if you will.
Any other questions, Counsel Schwin?
Yep, this ties into the earlier presentation tonight on a lot of residence, what density. And as we have this conversation, it's counts like we're going to be faced with a hard, hard decision in the next month or two, and what's appropriate density and what we'll do. How would change in the density affect your proposal upwards or downwards, both in St. Jacobs and Almyra?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure if I can, I'll try my best to answer that. You know, we, we are, I'll say, struggling with this a bit ourselves. You know, we, we have been, I think, very conscientious about not bringing, I'll say, a Kitchener approach to our projects now in the residential area in, in Woolwich. I'm, you know, I spent sixteen years living in St. Jacobs. I live in Conestoga. I'm from this area. You know, Jamie Schlegel and others, you know, know it well also. And we also have other businesses, the farmer's market and so on in the Woolwich area. So we know how special a community Woolwich is, and, and we're very, you know, conscious of, of finding that right mix of increased density and, you know, blending and fitting with the existing neighborhoods. They're kind of two ends of the, you know, opposite ends of a spectrum. And, you know, and that's a debate we've had, you know, with, with staff as well. Because, you know, the, the less dense our project, the more, you know, homes we could bring forward, the less capacity we will need. You know, so we've submitted a draft plan application. Again, what we're not here to talk about tonight, but just, you know, last Wednesday. And we're showing a fair range in that, from forty-five persons and jobs per hectare up to, and I forget the number, but, you know, a, a much larger number, to reflect the fact that we need to finish the discussions with staff. And ultimately, this council will decide, you know, what, what is an appropriate development of it. We're open to, you know, trying to find that right balance. So I'm not sure if I've answered it. It may be in a very roundabout way, but.
Counselor Burgess?
Through you, Chair Bryant, the delegate. Thanks lots for coming here and presenting. When I was running for councillor, there's a lot of conversation around, we need more retirement homes, long-term care. So I appreciate you guys looking at building this and the many jobs it'll bring to the community. Option II here, you're talking about backdating your units you can build. Reading this report, it looks like this has been in the works for a long time. Can you kind of give a bit of the history of this plan and where it's been and where it's going, kind of thing? Just for history?
Sure. And, you know, that, that notion of, of backdating, if you will, I mean, I think that's very much the approach that is being used with respect to the Activa lands in Almyra. And we're not, we're not here to discredit the, you know, the the appropriateness of that approach. I think it's meant to reflect sort of a steady need for population, although recognizing it doesn't happen in small increments. It tends to happen a bit lumpy. So I can only go back again to something I was saying before. You know, the, the Gillis Free D landowners were here for a pre-consultation with the township in 2021. You know, these lands have long been contemplated. I know there's been, you know, some comment from time to time, you know, about the province, you know, imposing its will and bringing lands like this forward. But I don't think that's really the case in Woolwich. I think the lands that Woolwich has moved forward have been lands that have been identified by the township for ultimate urban development. And, and we have stood here, and I want to recognize that too. You know, when we were here doing the ROPA six process, we also acknowledged that we are aware of the township's, I'll say, fairly unique staging policy. And we were not looking to take, you know, a Kitchener approach to our moving forward in, in Woolwich. But that said, you know, it still has to be economically feasible for us to get it off the ground because, you know, we're a third or fourth-generation company as well, and you don't get to that point by, by not, you know, being able to fund and organize, you know, these projects. They're, they're longstanding projects. They take a lot of risk. And there's bumps and surprises along the way sometimes, and you have to be financially sound to, to weather those times, like the housing times we're, we're weathering right now, despite the fact that there's a huge housing need. So there's a lot of history to it, and I think, you know, if, if the desire is not to look at a proportional allocation, to look at, you know, sort of the history of the lands, the length of time they've been in discussion and allocate a little bit more capacity that period of time would be another approach. You know, at the end of the day, neither approach, you know, means that St. Jacobs is going to grow more. That is governed by your, your population planning forecast, and it's also governed by capacity in St. Jacobs, which we know is not infinite at this point.
I can just follow up. So option I and II, to you, they accomplish the same thing. But option I, that would affect the developer, the self of you? Am I correct in saying that? Because now we're doing it proportional versus just backdating?
That's right. And, and, you know, and that's, it's not really our objective here. You know, we think our project stands on its own merits, and, you know, we don't wish, you know, fellow colleague, you know, to set them back. On the other hand, you know, we do feel there's some very strong precedence to costs and allocations and, and, you know, on a, on a proportionate basis. If one project's a hectare and one project's a hundred hectares, does the capacity or does the cost get split fifty-fifty? We'd suggest no.
Counsel, do we have any other questions for the delegate? No, seeing none? Mayor Shantz?
I, I would move to defer the, this report until we, I, I think the recommendation here was for, for thirty days, but to defer it, to give staff time to process everything that's happened here tonight and to allow us to work together with both developers to find a solution that is suitable, hopefully for everyone, or close enough to suitable for everyone.
Do I have a second or for that motion? Counselor Schwin, do we have any further discussion? Oh, discussion there, sorry.
Yeah, I support this. I think we need more conversations with developers and staff. But based on public meeting earlier tonight, I'm not comfortable, I guess, support. I'm supporting the development in principle in those two pieces of property. I really struggle to support the density that the province is dictating for us. I think if we're here as a council making decisions based on our municipality, we've heard clearly that the density is an issue for the town of St. Jacobs. It's based on density, but also services. Well, GRT was here today. They don't have a bus stop anywhere near either one of these parts of land. We can't accommodate the services of these dense subdivisions or planning projects in St. Jacobs. I'll compare, and I shouldn't say this, I'm going to use a Schlegel land, and Almyra has an example, sorry, Von. But we're right on a bus route there. We're right at the heart of shopping in Almyra. It's walkable. There is a potential where higher density does work for me. So I think if we're going to be a local council for our local municipality, we've got to risk offending the province and be prepared to tweak where it's appropriate for our local hamlets. So I'd like that to be part of the staff conversation over the next two weeks or so with both developers.
Okay, I see that we have Mike at the back raising his hand. Does council wish to let him have an opportunity to speak to this? Everybody's in agreement? Okay, come up.
Thank you, Counsel, for letting me speak about my development. I, I strongly feel that, you know, we propose a density that will accommodate both affordability for first-time homebuyers, for downsizers, for people in the community. So I feel that the basis should be on population rather than hectage. If you see our, Von, on Von's slide, I believe he's had nine, nine-hundred-and-fifty people. We have about three-and-fifty people as our proposal is currently contemplated. So it's a fair distribution in terms of peoples, or sorry, people. So that's my, my one request. Thank you.
Okay, so counsel, what did we want to do with this one then? Defer? Defer? Okay, then we'll put it to a vote. Sorry, Jeff?
So, I'm sorry, I was just looking for clarity on the motion. So it's to defer? Did you say for thirty days, Mayor Shantz, or?
Was the recommendation in Schlegel's presentation, I would defer until staff have, have time to confer with developers.
Help promote the conversations between all the parties.
Thirty days, good?
Yeah.
Yeah, thirty, until, why, why don't we pick a, a meeting night, Jeff?
Sure. Okay, I'm going to go to Ms. Fries for a minute. She had her hand up, and then I'll come back to Counselor Burgess.
That's fine. We can go to June tenth. I, I would say that in this situation, there is only two developers, and there's only so many options we can come back to council with. So we would probably be able to come back in the next two weeks as well, but June tenth is fine. So.
So June tenth? Okay, Counselor Burgess?
I was just going to ask Director Fries if you need more direction or not. Since you've already had some of these conversations, I assume?
Through you, Madam Chair. I think that the way I'm seeing the direction is that we come back to council with some alternatives to, to look at for a different allocation of the staging in St. Jacobs specifically. That's what I'm hearing. And then we'll still come forward with a recommendation as well, but we'll have that prepared for the June tenth.
I see Mr. Labrush.
And just to clarify, that was just for St. Jacobs that you're asking for the alternatives?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To speak to Counselor Schwin's comment about density, I think certainly the province wants to see a minimum of fifty-five units per hectare. And, you know, traditionally, the, the community's at forty-five. To get to fifty-five, I don't think is going to be a drastic, drastic shift in what it's going to appear in terms of the built form at the end of the day. I think both developers, the Polacorp application is approaching seventy. But again, that would be strongly encouraged by the province. And I know that Schlegel subdivision, as was referenced, ranges somewhere between forty-five, fifty-five, upwards of sixty. So I, I really, what I'm trying to say is I think we can really work with fifty-five as a minimum to avoid any pushback from the province and still meet both developers' objectives and within the St. Jacobs.
Counselor Schwin?
Completely agree. We can do that. We can't meet the needs of the residents or the communities, is my point.
That's a challenge.
And I believe they were fairly loud and clear in their messaging tonight, and I'd like to see how we can accommodate that going forward. Because I do, I also believe there's other parts, township, where more density does work and does make sense. But as mentioned before, we don't have any transit options for that community. It's not walkable, any retail or service-type businesses. And it doesn't fit the nature of St. Jacobs.
Okay, so we have a motion to defer. You seconded it, am I correct? Do I, any more questions before I put this to the floor? No more questions, then I'm going to call the vote. All in favor of deferral, and that would be carried. Okay, before we go any further, we need to have a resolution put forward asking for an extension of the meeting to eleven forty-five in accordance with section seventy-five of the procedural bylaw. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a motion? Mayor Shotts, a seconder, Counselor Burgess, all in favor? That would be carried. Okay, Mr. Smith, we're good till eleven forty-five? Yep. Okay, so that one's, moving on, mayor's report on regional matters. Mayor Shotts? Just got to find it.
The speed limit? Sorry. Oh, yeah, the WSIB report? Do you want me to do this, or do you want to do the WSIB and come back? Sure.
Okay, WSIB report. Who is, is calm? Do it, calm? Okay, calm, go ahead. Sorry, it's not part of the plan here.
No problem through you, Chair Brian. I had to scroll down to find the report as well. It's kind of buried at the end of this. I'll try to be brief because of the lateness of the hour. I think it's a fairly straightforward report. We received a surplus from WSIB because we're a Schedule One employer, which means that we pay premiums to WSIB, and they had a surplus. So they offered to all employers that meet certain criteria. We're going to give a premium rebate essentially. Part of this is also related to just overall improvements in the plan, the WSIB plan. Just making sure that we, as long as we met no certain criteria. So there was, I'm just looking for the dollar amount here. Two hundred and six thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars of one-time funding available for us, kind of a bit of a windfall. So it's extra money that's coming into us that wasn't expected, wasn't part of the budget. Normally, we would put this into an operating contingency reserve for council's discretion. But what staff were recommending here, because it is related to WSIB matters, which are staffing-related matters and HR kind of related matters, we've had a number of variances over the years or HR-related costs, one-time kind of costs that we could have benefited from having an HR contingency reserve. So staff are recommending creating an HR contingency reserve using this WSIB one-time funding and to be used at council's discretion to fund HR, WSIB, sick time, any of those kind of expenses, should we incur them going forward. So that's the recommendation.
Mayor Shotts?
Just a question. Can you give me an example of what that would be used for? Like you said, sick days or whatever, can you just give a little bit more on that?
Sure, through the chair to you, Mayor Shotts. It would be up to the council's discretion, but rather than have it kind of just stuck in an operating kind of contingency for anything, it could be used as if we're over in variance for sick leave, for example, or if we had one-time overtime costs that weren't budgeted for extra fees. We could even use it for the impacts for the union negotiations. So we had market adjustments, for example, we could use that that weren't necessarily budgeted. So it would be any of those kind of staff-related costs, very similar to what we would use the operating contingency for, but they would more be associated with HR-related matters. And the reason, this is really just setting up this kind of a reserve account. And going forward in future budget years, we could set aside a certain dollar amount for these kinds of expenditures, but this is a good kind of seed money to get that HR contingency reserve established.
Okay, counsel, do we have any questions regarding this? Counselor Swin?
We've had conversations in the last few months about our sick time policy. When are we expecting to hear back on that and on new policy?
Through the chair, so we were just kind of waiting on, part of it was where we're doing it before the union negotiations, where there wasn't time really to do that fulsome analysis ahead of the union negotiations. It is still kind of on the agenda to report back to council, but I would say probably the end of Q two, probably the end of, beginning of Q three, before budget parameters, hopefully. If there's any recommendations through that to be considered through the budget.
Counsel, any other questions? No? You have a recommendation before you on this one. Do we have a mover? Counselor Caddo? A seconder? Nobody? Counselor Swin, discussion?
Provided we can get that report this fiscal year. Because to me, they're tied in.
You need that to work. That's achievable?
Through the chair, yes, I believe like we could get some kind of a report, the pros and cons of the sick leave that we discussed during budget. We could definitely get that this fiscal year. I was just a little bit confused. Are we delaying the kind of the recommendation for this report? I just wasn't sure that that is.
Okay, so we have a mover and a seconder. Any other questions? No, then I'll call the question. All in favor? That would be carried. Okay, now Mayor Shotts, it's your turn.
Thanks. I wanted to talk about the speed limits on Lobzinger Line and Northfield Drive. And I guess I failed to put all the pieces together, so we needed to pass a bylaw as well as pass the motion at council. So at the last committee meeting, we did pass a bylaw to reduce this. No. To change the speed limits on Lobzinger Line and Northfield Drive to eighty, down to sixty in the school zone, and then back up to eighty for both of those. That will be final approval next Wednesday. I think it's next Wednesday at our next council meeting. And after that, we should see the signs change. And I think that that was the main thing I just wanted to talk about. Oh, there was one other thing, too. We also added additional budget input meetings for the region, one in Cambridge and one in the townships. So you can, the region will set up here for one of their budget meetings.
When?
That'd be in the fall.
Is there five percent budget parameters?
We did, yes.
That was, that was appropriate.
That was council's direction to staff, yes, five percent.
Way to go, guys. Any council reports? No council, no council reports. Outstanding activity list. Anybody have anything for that one? No? Items pulled from the information package? Nothing? Items for information and public notices. I'm going to give this to Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to report an error that the applicant made on their municipal information form. It is for Homestead and Suites. That address is actually forty-five Benjamin Road. They wanted to correct that for the record.
Okay, thank you. Next, we will call on Director Freeze to provide an update on Twenty-two Church Street.
The only update I have for today, and we'll keep this on as a standing item, is that we have posted our request for proposals. It closes on May twenty-third.
Thank you. Did you have a question? No? Okay. Okay, that brings us to the end of the regular meeting of council. On behalf of council, we thank all those who watched here or at home, and we sincerely appreciate all those who took the time to participate tonight. Before we adjourn, we need to go into a closed session for a personal matter and a land matter. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I need to vote on that. A motion, Counselor Caddo, seconded by Counselor Swin. All in favor? That would be carried. Do that? Okay, sit around again.